Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, March 2, 2022 at 6:00 PM. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. And I'm hearing an echo in the room. Okay, I'll call the meeting on to order and all council are present with the exception of Councilmember Pedori, who is expected momentarily. And the first order of business is remote teleconference, AB 361. Ms. Kendell, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and members of the public. Assembly Bill 361 requires the city within 30 days of holding a virtual meeting for the first time, every 30 days thereafter, to make findings ratifying the state of the emergency. The council ratified Resolution 21-029 on October 6, 2021, and has ratified it monthly since. The council must now renew the effect of the resolution by ratifying it again or adopting another. Staff recommends at this time that council ratify Resolution 21-029, Emergency Teleconferencing, authorizing remote teleconference meetings of all city legislative bodies for the following 30 days in accord with the Ralph M. Brown Act. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? And seeing no public comment, any council discussion?
We do have public comment. We do have public comment. Sorry, we're still working through some items, Mayor, please.
And I am screen challenged over here with two screens, so I cannot see all the Zoom attendees. So Ms. Kendell, if you would help our council members.
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Just one moment, I'm.
Okay. Let the record show that Councilmember Pedori is in attendance.
Ezra, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Ezra, and I'm a lifelong local NCS UMB Sciences student. I'm calling in tonight to remind the council and the community why former Officer Michael Gonzalez was removed from his position. In May 2020, members of the community reported alarming bumper stickers on Gonzalez's vehicle, which expressed homophobic sentiment and calls to violence, as well as alignment and involvement with anti-government white supremacist hate group, the Three Percenters. The Three Percenters are an extremist group recognized by the Anti-Defamation League and the Southern Property Conference.
This isn't the time for public comments. Sorry, I should have. Could you hold that thought till public comment? We're talking about remote teleconferencing, that's the agenda item.
Okay, when will I be able to speak?
When we call for public comment, that's agenda item, general public comment, that's agenda item number four.
Okay, thank you, I'll wait.
Thank you for your understanding. Anyone else from the public?
Nobody virtually, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
I have approval of the recommended action.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're still trying to figure out these microphones. All right, now I'll turn to Councilmember Coletti for helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, now go to approval of the agenda. And I'm recommending moving item 12D, which is street work on Ocean View Boulevard to immediately following consent agenda for operational reasons. And also to reverse the, we have, to remove item 15C from the closed session agenda because that is finished. We did that at 5:00. And to reverse the order of items A, 15A and 15B. So we hear 15B, that's the sequel litigation first, and then the item 15A, which is Slode Avenue.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those modifications.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to item 2A, Presentation, Central Coast Community Energy Annual Update. Mr. Gabe Ruiz, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm going to go ahead and get my screen share up here, so I'll be able to share that with council and the public. And just to confirm that you are able to see my screen?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, all right, perfect. Again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to present this evening. My name is Gabe Ruiz. I am a Senior Customer Manager with Central Coast Community Energy. I will be providing the City of Pacific Grove's annual member agency update this evening. It'd be my pleasure to answer any of the questions you have at the end of my presentation, but if I'm unclear on anything, please feel free to interrupt me. Be happy to make any type of clarification. So I know, you know, many members of the council and the community, but just for those who do not know or not aware, Central Coast Community Energy is one of 23 CCA's, those are Community Choice Aggregates in the state of California that serve over 11 million customers. CCA's support their local governments to meet their climate action goals, provide residents and businesses with more energy options, ensure local transparency and accountability while also driving economic development. More than 200 cities and counties throughout California have chosen to participate with community choice aggregation. So really, how does the CCA work? So this was a bill, Assembly Bill 117, that was passed in 2002. This established the roles of community choice aggregates within the state. Central Coast Community, again, is currently one of 23 in the state of California. One thing that I, you know, really like to point out is the way that we work is what we do as an agency is we go out and, just again, for community information, we buy clean renewable energy for our collective ratepayers, and it's delivered through the existing transmission lines, a cleaner, more competitive option to, you know, the current existing utility option. You know, at a, at a city and county, you know, as city and counties join, basically what they've done is they've joined together to take control of their electricity needs and provide economic and environmental benefits to their community. So the way that it works with Central Coast Community Energy, here we are with the graphic going now, but what we do again is we buy the energy, it goes through your existing transmission lines with the investor-owned utility, and then is delivered to your home. And what we do with the revenue that we generate as an agency is we keep that, it allows us to keep the rates low for our customers while also funding energy programs. Apologize. My, uh... Here we are. So briefly, I will just go over this, but the agency is made up of 33 member agencies. These are 33 cities and counties that collectively have agreed to provide their communities with cleaner energy. Central Coast Community Energy provides over 400,000 customer accounts, electricity to 400,000 customer accounts along the central coast. You know, geographically, we are the, so sorry, geographically here, we are the largest CCA in the state of California. We work in all of these communities, we participate in business and industry associations, as well as community-based organizations. So right now, we are 33 strong. I'm also pleased to announce that we, 34th community, has elected to join Central Coast Community Energy. The City of Atascadero recently voted to join as a member, and we look forward to their enrollment. So the way that we are governed, we have two voting bodies, a Policy and Operations Board. These boards are made up of city managers, mayors, councilmembers, and elected officials. Voting seats are determined by population, so member agencies with populations above 50,000, greater than 50,000, will have a continuous seat. And then populations that are below, under 50,000 are grouped by region and share of these. As an example, Councilmember Tomlinson currently sits on our Policy Board and represents the Peninsula City Group. Our Community Advisory Council is made up of qualified and committed individuals who are important connections to our diverse community. They also serve as an advisory body to the Policy and Operations Board and to 3CE staff on recommendations, recommendations on customer programs, and community engagement. So some of the accomplishments, things that we have achieved, you know, probably since, you know, our last report. So Central Coast Community Energy serves 94% of eligible customers in our service area. So in the last 12 months, we've been able to increase signups in 3C Prime, that is our 100% clean and renewable option, by 40%. We've increased our enrollment by 25%, again, making us geographically the largest CCA in the state. The agency has on staff 34 local employees between two offices in Monterey and San Luis Obispo, serving our newly enrolled customers. So one of the big, you know, I think what's most important for the community and council to understand is how important our energy programs are, you know, to what we do and what we're trying to accomplish here as an agency. So since 2018, CCCE has allocated $27 million to our local energy programs and provided $50 million in customer savings. We have established contracts to increase the total megawatts that we have from renewables by 49% and increased our battery storage contracts by 23%. Also, what I'd like to point out is that, you know, we did receive an A credit rating from the S&amp;P. We were the first CCA in the state to receive an A credit rating, and this is just really going to open up a lot of different avenues and the different doors for us to provide new opportunities for the community. And really, how we're going to do that, I mean, clearly stated here, you can see that our goal is by 2030 is to provide 100% clean and renewable energy. To reach that goal, we have entered agreements for approximately $1 billion of long-term solar plus storage contracts since 2018. We have executed 14 contracts with clean and renewable energy providers. These are new projects that are going to get us to that goal of 60%, providing 60% clean and renewable by 2025. So we are already on track for that. We've shortlisted seven local projects through our renewables RFP. We have joined with other CCA's to improve duration storage that will support greater liability through existing and new technologies. Also, we have issued an RFQ for up to 100 megawatts of the front-of-the-meter battery storage. This has the potential to island projects and increase resiliency. And just talking that, really, really what the front-of-the-meter storage is, what we're trying to do here, again, yes, we're trying to reduce the grid stress, stress on the grid during high period, high-stress periods. We also want to make sure that, you know, we're increasing the reliability. We're working with member agencies. We have the 15 member agencies that submitted 90 different sites with front-of-the-meter energy storage projects, so we're still going through those, they're still being determined, but, you know, we're very excited to have the amount that we do, and we look forward to working on these projects. And historically, just to give you an idea of what our rates have been in the past, we have always provided a discount to our ratepayers. We have the model that we've had, we call internally as an IOU-minus model. Basically, what we do is we simply take the investor-owned utility rate and we apply a percentage discount. You can see there, 2018, 2019, 3%, 5% rebate, that was end-of-year rebate, we switched that model to a monthly discount starting 2020 with 7%. Of course, in light of the pandemic, our board unanimously, our board unanimously voted to reduce the bill for all of our customers for the months of May and June. And by doing so, we saved our communities over $24 million by doing that. So it was, no action needed to be taken by the customers, they simply, you know, it was a reduction of the rate on their bill, and they honestly probably didn't even notice it, right? I mean, we just reduced the rate, the bill was down, so, you know, very, you know, very important for us to have. Since then, it's been a 2% discount because of where we pulled funds from, we are our reserve funds, we are building that back up, but we are still able to provide our customers with a discount. Now, what we're moving to now, to, you know, to that end, really, we have created a new CCCE generation rate. We are no longer going to follow the PG&E generation rates or the IOU-minus model that we had. What we have done is we have gone out and created more predictable, stable rates that we hope, you know, we look over, can hold for a three-year period of time. We've made the rates simpler to understand, we've reduced the amount of rate classes. We feel that also what we've done is gone out to make these rates fair. There, you know, no, you know, we're really reducing the cross-subsidation of certain rate classes by still being very competitive and really, you know, making sure that we are offering the most reliable service, of course, but also savings to our customers. Really, what you're paying for in the bill, just to give an idea to, to the community and to council, there's four things in the bill where there's not a lot to hide. One, about 90% is going to go to the power of, you know, the procurement, right? How much does it cost us to buy the energy that you need? Then we have 4% that goes to our energy programs, we have 3% that goes to our rate stabilization fund, that is the fund that we use to pay for that 50% COVID relief fund, and then also 3% to administrative costs. And so quickly, just discussing our energy programs. So really what we've done, you know, in the past in total, we've contributed $27 million to our energy programs in our service area. This year, in this fiscal year, we are going to contribute a 4%, which is going to equate to over $14 million in energy programs. You can see the list on the right there. I would really highlight, I'll speak a little bit shortly about our Electrify Your Ride program, which I'm happy to say that residents of the City of Pacific Grove have taken advantage of. But you can see our programs there, and really what we aim to do is, we live in a very diverse, we serve a very diverse community. So we really aim to make sure that we are, you know, communicating, you know, making sure that the community understands what programs are available to them, working with different industry associations to do so, community-based organizations to do so. So it's just very important that, you know, people understand where their money is going, and this is what we're spending their revenue, the revenue on, really making sure that we're making this available to our community and to our ratepayers. Also, one of the programs that we have is something that we're working on with our member agencies on currently. It's something for our medium and heavy-duty electric vehicle program. So really what we're doing is we are trying to provide incentives and funding to our member agencies to make sure that they have access to these funds when they're looking about, you know, thinking of electrifying fleet vehicles, you know, street sweepers, garbage trucks, whatever it might be. This is the program we're currently working on and engaging with our member agencies. And then Electrify Your Ride, this is probably one of our, you know, the big program that we have now. It's $2.8 million that we have devoted to this. This program is not only for, you know, buying an electric vehicle, but it's for home charging, it's for commercial charging, e-bikes. So there's, there's really Electrify Your Ride, you know, within that program itself, a lot of different areas where we are trying to succeed, we're communicating with, again, residents, commercial businesses, to make sure that they are aware of this program, you know, and the funding that is available. You know, typically for a charging station, as an example, a commercial charging station, we really want to make sure, depending on the size of the project, of course, and the complexity, but really want to make sure that, you know, we're covering anywhere around 70% of the total project costs. And then looking at some of the numbers for the city, here we are, you know, pleased to say, you know, we have over 96% enrollment within the City of Pacific Grove. And I, you know, just to point out, I am a lifelong resident of the city. I live in Pacific Grove now, lived here 35 years, so it's fantastic to see that. You know, you can see the numbers there, but one that I really like to point out is the Electrify Your Ride number. So the community here has really taken advantage over the years from all of our Electrify Your Ride programs, really taking advantage of that, in terms of, you know, grabbing those incentives that we provide. And along with that, we have just a couple more slides here. But for customer, what we're doing right now is we're really trying to develop customer resources and tools on our website, so people can access their information, they can make sure that, you know, if they want to understand more about how they're using energy, we want to give them the power to do so. We want to provide the tools for them to make sure that they have access to their information. So that's something that we're doing right now, that's currently still in development, you know, but, but we have, we have tested it, and, you know, I've done it myself, I've used it for my account, it is helpful, it really does help you understand when and how you're using that energy. So we look forward to introducing that to more of the public. And then lastly here, another program that, sorry, another item that we've worked on is our vendor registration. So if you noticed in our accomplishment slide, we have over $1 million in contracts with local vendors. We really want to keep the money that we spend local. So what we've done is we've created this vendor registry. So any businesses, you know, law, accounting, graphic design, whatever we might need to outsource for a certain project or whatever it might be, we have created a vendor registry which is going to allow businesses within our service area to input their information, and then when we're looking for certain services, we can go to the vendor registry and we can contact them. So that concludes my presentation. I very much appreciate your time, Mayor and council and public. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Any council comments or questions? Councilmember Pedori?
Thank you, Gabe, for that presentation. Very helpful. You had, in that presentation too, you listed Pacific Grove about roughly 8,000 homes. How many megawatts does it take to power the city, roughly?
Yeah, I think, Councilmember, roughly, I can get that information to you, we do have that accessible, I do not have that off the top of my head right now. I was definitely looking at it earlier, but I'd be happy to provide that information to you.
Yeah, I was just wondering, the RFQ, with the 100-megawatt, is that like sufficient or not? But maybe if you can find that information for me.
Yeah, I...
The question I had was the front-of-the-meter battery storage, you mentioned there's a potential to island projects. Is that something that the city can participate in?
I would probably need to put you in contact with our Energy Business Development Manager on that. He's the one that runs that program, Tony Pastore, but I could have him reach out or at least get you an answer to that question. We did, the details of that, I'm not able to provide, I'm sorry.
Okay. And lastly, maybe you can point me in the right direction here too, but I would like to know what 3CE's, like, strategy is for behind-the-meter battery storage? Is there any views around it or not? Thanks.
I know it has been discussed internally. Yes, we have had that discussion. I would say at this time, it is not something that we are developing in terms of any of our programs, but we know, we have heard feedback of that need. But what I can say is, you know, again, it's been discussed internally, it's not something that, you know, within this fiscal year, you know, we're able to add to our programs.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ruiz, for the presentation and the update. You know, it's a privilege of mine to represent our community and the others on the board, on the Policy Board. My assessment of 3CE is just, it's an unbelievable professional organization that's doing really great work for our community, as Gabe told us about here today, and my hats off to all of you and all the hard work that you do. 34 people doing all of that is not a lot of people, so. Do take advantage, residents and businesses, of the offerings and the programs that 3CE put together. I actually did the Electrify My Ride and got the rebate, and it was very easy, they make it really easy to do and to participate in. I tested it for you. And, and so, yeah, thank you for being here tonight, and to any of my colleagues, if you want to know about 3CE stuff and what's going on in the Policy Board, I'm happy to give you updates, because it really has been a pleasure, and I've learned a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson. Right, moving on to announcements, Mr. Laredo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, and good evening to members of the council and to the public. It's a pleasure to be here, it's been a while. The council did meet in closed session for one item at 5:00 PM, and that was conference with legal counsel concerning the lawsuit of Michael Gonzalez versus City of Pacific Grove. Police Chief Madalone and City Manager Ben Harvey filed in Northern District Court of the US Federal Court. Council met with me, with Chief Madalone and Tori Hannah, to receive an overview of the allegations that are set forth in the complaint. Council had an opportunity to ask questions about the action. The council took one specific action by unanimous vote, they did appoint a subcommittee comprised of Mayor Peak and Councilmember Smith. The purpose of the subcommittee is to provide advice and direction to me as to near-term actions to be taken by the city to defend the lawsuit. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Staff announcements?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council, and members of the public. We have one staff announcement from our Community Development Director, Allison Hunter.
Good evening, thank you, Tori, and Mayor, members of the council and the public. Just a quick update on the Mission Linen property annexation was approved by LAFCO this past Monday, February 28. We're now in a 30-day, what they can call a reconsideration period. So there was no testimony, nobody spoke against this annexation, so we expect that to go through very easily. I will definitely keep the council posted as we move forward. This will require a minor general plan amendment to make needed changes to our land use element and the general plan map, it should be fairly minor in nature. Still no plans for development at the property at this time. And that concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. For temporary, like Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take a minute to strongly condemn the atrocities and attacks that are happening in Ukraine by the Russian Federation. My heart is with the Ukrainian people and to the hundreds of thousands who have had to flee their homes, and to the Ukrainian people who have stayed to fight for their democracy and freedom. I pray for their protection and peace. I would also like to express my deepest condolences for the family of Officer Jorge David Alvarado Jr. and the City of Salinas. Officer Alvarado was shot and killed in the line of duty while conducting a traffic stop over the weekend. I know our police department stands in solidarity, as do I and many members of our community... I know our police department stands in solidarity, as do I and many members of our community. May he rest in power, and this evening I would like to suggest that we close in his honor.
Excellent, Mayor, Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Councilmember McAdams for doing that. I would like to also have a moment of silence for the Salinas Officer Jorge Alvarado that was killed in the line of duty on a traffic stop on Friday. So please, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Any other council announcements? Right, oh, I have one. We've gotten several requests to know how many people attend our meetings. Well, we have three brave souls here in person. Thank you for being here. It's nice to see people. And we have about 60 virtual participants.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I figured the mic out. I just wanted to say, I know there's a lot of really difficult things going on right now in the world, but I just wanted to say I'm really glad to be back up here with you, with you all, participating in person in the meeting. So that's all, thanks.
All right, well now, well now, Councilmember Tomlinson?
I just want to add my thanks to all the people behind the scenes that have made this happen. Because this, we haven't had too many hiccups and it's been really great. So thank you for putting all this together for us.
We'll now go into public, general public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We have two virtual, Your Honor, so I will allow them to speak if you'd like first. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to comment on the NOAA resolution that's on tonight's consent agenda without pulling it from consent. I applaud Councilmember Tomlinson's bringing the resolution to council quickly to promote a marvelous and appropriate reuse of the building and preservation of Rachel's amazing murals. It's so important to keep the efforts of Coast moving forward, now in collaboration with 3CE. Coast has worked hard since your earlier resolution in May of 2021 to gather support and take information to Representative Panetta and anyone in the government or elsewhere who can help stop the auction. And the congressman has been very supportive in trying to stop the auction. This is well, this is a well-written resolution, and I hope you will be able to adopt it on consent. It will be very meaningful in continued efforts to stop the auction and promote the conveyance of the property for public benefit to a collaboration of Coast and 3CE. I am disappointed that the resolution does not acknowledge that this is the traditional homeland of the Yalone Kostanoe and Esalen Nation and their deep spiritual ties to this land, which Tribal Chairwoman Luis Ramirez described for council when last year's discussions of the NOAA building took place. I hope the city will correct the omission of Ocean's ties to this land in any future documents. Right now, however, the need to approve the resolution is urgent and should be acted on without delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ezra, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Ezra. I'm a lifelong local and CSUMB social sciences student. I'm calling in tonight to remind the council and the community why former Officer Michael Gonzalez was removed from his position. In May 2020, members of the community reported alarming bumper stickers on Gonzalez's vehicle, which expressed homophobic sentiment and calls to violence, as well as alignment and involvement with anti-government white supremacist hate group, the Three Percenters. Three Percenters are an extremist group recognized by the Anti-Defamation League and the Southern Poverty Law Center. In the first investigation addressing the decals on his vehicle, Gonzalez lied about not knowing who the Three Percenters are. This violated PGPD's Code of Conduct, undermining his integrity and the community's trust. Then there was a second investigation regarding the Parler account in November 2020. For those who may not know, Parler was a social media app created for the alt-right to utilize their free speech, which quickly became a safe place for violent white supremacist hate speech. Hate speech, by the way, is not protected by the First Amendment. The app was quickly removed from all platforms for inciting violence. On this app, Gonzalez, whose username was, oh, disregard that. On this app, Gonzalez publicly posted, and I quote, "Fuck Black Lives Matter," and quote, "Free Kyle Rittenhouse." Kyle Rittenhouse was a 17-year-old wannabe vigilante cop who murdered two peaceful protesters after crossing state lines in Kenosha. An officer who politically aligns with Kyle Rittenhouse, a white supremacist and a murderer, cannot keep this community safe. The civilians of this town are safer without Gonzalez in the privileged position of policing. You do not have to be white to be an agent for white supremacy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yes, Your Honor. Andrew Kay, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilpersons. My wife and I are residents in Pacific Grove and find ourselves driving over to Seaside to visit their dog park daily. I would prefer not to have to drive each day in my vehicle to Seaside. What PG really needs is a fenced-in dog park within our city for all the residents who are dog owners. Please consider this request for the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. I understand the cost for a fenced-in dog park to be approximately $100,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chelsea, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks. My name is Chelsea. I use they or she pronouns, and I am a local. I was born in PG and have been watching it change over the years. And I also wanted to call in and just reemphasize the extreme support and significance for removing cops with bigotry and violence in their, yeah, in their ethics. I think that we've really gotten far from having a real, meaningful, common sense conversation about who police officers are and what we want them to be. And what we've noticed in the last several decades is increasing extremism, increasing safety for officers to commit acts of violence without repercussions or accountability. And that we're even having a conversation still about an officer who was very vocal, and I would say even aggressive, about his hatred for marginalized communities. And I think that if we're ever supposed to trust the police, then we need to have trustworthy police people. And I think we are overusing our police and putting them in positions that are not beneficial for anyone, causing harm to the community and causing harm to officers like that one recently in Salinas. These events are extremely rare, right? That was the first time in 80 years. But why we also have armed officers responding to things like traffic jams and speeding and mental health issues almost always escalates and does not de-escalate the situation. And it's not about training, it's about what we believe these officers are supposed to be doing. And so I'd really like to see there be actual change in the department. Instead, what I saw is that there's a million more dollars going into the police budget this year than last year, with several more items totaling another million dollars or so. This is a small town of 15,000 old white people. This is not a town that needs a huge, advanced militarized force. And I'm just wondering why we continue to overinvest. And there haven't been any other strategic changes made to the police department since for several years you had a bigot with violent tendencies that nobody called out or held accountable. So I don't know how to trust the other officers or the police chief that are still there. Because again, I don't hear them actually saying or verbalizing what's wrong with this situation. So still looking for real action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Your Honor. Tina, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you for, thank you for the public comments. I'd like to agree with Andrew Kay about the dog park. I think it's long overdue, and thank you, Andrew, for bringing that up. But the reason that I wanted to speak today was regarding the litigation from the officer that was terminated. The court has already ruled that police officers and other public servants are held to a higher standard than a normal citizen, and that free speech for a normal citizen does not apply to a police officer. The Three Percenters are not a Second Amendment group. They are a hate group on watch lists. You can't get a sticker for the Three Percenters at the 7-Eleven. You either need to attend a meeting or go on their website. Either way, you know exactly what these folks are about. As we saw with the kidnapping plot to take and execute Michigan Governor, law enforcement was integrated into these militias and that the militias actively recruit from police and sheriff's departments. This police officer is Hispanic. The leader of the white nationalist militia, the Proud Boys, is Hispanic. This doesn't preclude him from supporting the cause of white supremacy. This isn't about political affiliation. We know that statistically, there are going to be police officers that are Democrats, that are Republicans, that are independents. This is about the flagrant act that destroys the public trust. The Three Percenters, Proud Boys, Oath Keepers are not political views. They are domestic terrorist organizations. As a member of a group that was disparaged by the police officer's window decal, I know this just wasn't a funny sticker, but something that was intended to hurt and demoralize. In closing, I believe that the chief and the city manager did the right thing by terminating him and should not back down from any lawsuit. And any additional officers found to be affiliated with a militia should meet the same fate. And I yield the rest of my time, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Molly, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi. I remember when I saw the post from Mr. Gonzalez, and I was absolutely terrified knowing that there was a police officer with Three Percenter stickers on his vehicle posting racist comments. Fuck Black Lives Matter. I am a Pacific Grove resident who is a proud mother of a black biracial child. I have also long felt that it has always been unsafe in PG for my child to play outside due to racial hatred. It's the same racial hatred Mr. Gonzalez contributed to that perpetuates toxic stress in our community, and it negatively impacts our children's sense of safety. I am a United States veteran who defended the land we stand on for all people, and I find his behavior disgraceful to all that is honorable to live a life of service. His behavior is anti-black, and he is recommitting himself to this cause. I respect the city's decision to deny him access to positions of power with regards to public safety, and it's my sincere hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly, you have the floor.
We just heard from Molly.
Yeah.
Sorry. Norma, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So good, good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers and residents of Pacific Grove. I want to personally express my support for the Pacific Grove city officials who fired the police officer, who is now suing for wrongful termination. They, they had full authority to terminate his employment, and they have the Pacific Grove Police Department Policy Manual to back them up. There's a section devoted to standards of conduct that addresses both on and off-duty conduct and misconduct. That officer violated many of the standards of conduct. He told us who he was by his display of truck decals, comments on his parlor account, and his association with the Three Percenters, who participated in the January 6th insurrection, by the way. He lost the public trust. His own actions disqualified him for any law enforcement job. He has no one to blame but himself, and now he's trying to sue to get a million dollars. These standards of conduct give city officials written authority to terminate employees who so grossly and blatantly violate them. The ex-police officer's lawsuit is frivolous, and the city should not pay for his breaches of employment as they were completely within their rights to terminate him. I stand with many residents who for months advocated with emails, phone calls, comments at city council meetings, and signed a petition. We are glad he is gone and glad he is no longer policing our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. I wanted to voice my, or second my support for what people like Norma, Chelsea, Ezra, Molly, what everybody said there. I just wanted to remind everyone that this officer that we trusted and paid with our tax dollars endangered our citizens directly by retaliating against one of them who was brave enough to start a petition to question his actions and his stickers by placing this pictures of this guy's name on parlor under the handle Mags3per, flaunting his Three Percenters affiliation after he had, in fact, lied in the first investigation, saying that he wasn't affiliated with Three Percenters, didn't know what they were about. Right after he's cleared from that, he basically brazenly flaunts his affiliation and calls for retaliation against citizens who would dare question him. That's a danger to, to our local community. I feel much safer that he's gone. I wanted to voice my support for those involved in his removal. And I just wanted to remind people that Pacific Grove is a little bit safer now that this guy is gone. It's been kind of successfully framed as a First Amendment issue, which is ridiculous. It's not a First Amendment issue. This was a guy who brandished his fetish for armed violence at every turn. Assault rifle decals all over his truck in the city lot. You know, his, his Three Percenter affiliation, and we know that that's a violent hate group. It's not about any kind of First Amendment or stuff that he's saying about other organizations on his free time. It's about this guy, it's about a gun nut with violent, you know, fetishes and affiliations with anti-government groups, who's taking a check, who was taking a check to the tune of over $120,000 just salary and $36,000 other commitment and benefits package from the city. And I just, I just wanted to voice my support for his removal. The right thing was done, and we need to keep our eyes on why this guy is gone. It has nothing to do with the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Sorry, it took me a moment to unmute. I just want to thank the council for having both the in-person meetings and the virtual meetings. I'm a member of the, what I think an earlier member of the public referred to as one of the old people here. And I appreciate being able to continue to attend the meetings and hear all the voices like we did last month with regard to the Feast of Lanterns and that we're hearing now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to consent agenda, I'd like to pull item 9D, that's Alvarado Technology. I might have the name wrong, apologies. And hear that following item 12D. Would counsel like any other Mayor Pro Tempore McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to pull the item, but I'd like to just comment on 9E and thank the mayor for drafting this letter and my colleagues for supporting this potential veterans housing
All right, go out to the public for any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
There we go. I'd like to pull 9A, new local emergency actions.
Anyone else from the public?
I see another hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
I'm happy to move approval of the consent agenda with the modifications stated.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I suggest, following this consent agenda summary, we do, as already approved, 12D, then 9D, and then 9A. So moved, Senator. All right. Quickly going through what we've just done, we've approved council minutes from February 16th. We've approved resolution in support of conveyance of the NOAA property on Lighthouse. Councilmember Tomlinson, thank you. We have received minutes from the Marina, Monterey Salinas Transit Meeting, December and January, from Councilmember Emilio. We've, let's see. We've approved the proposed contract amendment and reimbursement agreement with Rincon Consultants for a project at 1661 Sunset Drive. We have approved appointments of Kathleen Balk, I hope I pronounced the name right, to the Administrative Enforcement Hearing Officer Panel, and Chip Rurig to the Economic Development Commission, and endorsed Councilmember Coletti as liaison to the BNRC. Congratulations to all. And we've approved a support letter for the veterans home in Monterey County. This is an effort by Supervisor Louise Aleho. And we've received minutes from the Beautification and Natural Resources Commission from December and January, from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force from December and January, and Museum Board minutes from February, May, November last year. And that concludes our consent agenda. We'll now move on to the items that have been moved. Item 12D is next. Ms. Hallaby, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the public. I'm going to quickly share my screen. All right, confirming everyone can see that, okay? Yes, awesome. All right, so the item before you tonight is the fiscal year 2122 Street Rehabilitation Project Award of Contract. The recommendation associated with this item is to authorize an agreement with Monterey Peninsula Engineering for our street rehab project, which will address segments of Oceanview Boulevard in an amount not to exceed $1,145,323 plus a 15% contingency. So a little bit of background, annually, we approve our capital improvement program, and generally that includes some street rehabilitation and maintenance projects. And in the current year, CIP, we approve the street rehabilitation project, which will address two segments of Oceanview Boulevard. These segments were selected based on a really thorough assessment of our pavement management program and existing road conditions, as well as in-field observations. So as noted, we will be addressing two segments of Oceanview Boulevard. We will be addressing the areas highlighted in pink on this map. So the area noted with an A is the first segment. That's Oceanview Boulevard from 17th Street to Seapalm. And then we will also be addressing Oceanview Boulevard from Second Street to Carmel, which is this area here with the letter B. Both of these segments are obviously very heavily used segments of roadway in the city, and they are both currently in poor condition. They have a PCI which ranges from 33 to, oops, sorry there, 33 to 40. And as you can see from the existing conditions photos that are noted on the screen, there's significant alligatoring, there's been patching that hasn't held up, and it's just really showing that poor condition. So the project will help us significantly improve the pavement conditions. It will also help us address the underground infrastructure. So now on to the scope of work. As I noted, we will be doing significant street and pavement improvements, so that includes 182,000 square feet of AC overlay. We'll be doing 3,000 square feet of pavement patch. We'll be doing some stormwater improvements, which include 184 linear feet of stormwater pipe installation, reconstruction of five catch basins, construction of two new catch basins, and three storm drain manhole access points. We'll be doing a little bit of reconstructing of sidewalk and curb and gutter. We'll be reconstructing three curb ramps and installing one new curb ramp. We'll be placing thermoplastic pavement markings throughout both stretches. And then we will also be doing some sewer improvements, which include replacement of 725 linear feet of sewer pipe and rehabilitation of eight manholes. So to get us to where we are today, we went through our call for bids process. We released a call for bids on December 13th, and we received four very competitive bids that are noted here on the screen and included in the agenda report. Monterey Peninsula Engineering was qualified as a lowest responsible bidder with that bid at 1.14 million. They performed a number of street rehabilitation projects, sewer and stormwater improvement projects for the city, so they're very well qualified to perform this work. Now, as it relates to project funding, again, this project was approved as part of the current year's capital improvement plan, and it was approved with a $1.5 million budget from various funding sources, as noted on the screen. That includes our general fund allocation of $300,000, our road maintenance and rehabilitation account, otherwise known as Senate Bill One funding, with a $310,000 allocation, as well as Measure X and sewer fund monies. So we have, again, a $1.5 million project budget as approved through the CIP. I do want to note that this project is vital, as it helps us meet our maintenance of effort requirements, which requires that we spend $500,000 from the general fund on project-related expenses in order to be eligible for continued Measure X and Senate Bill One funding in the future. Just quickly, in closing, some additional project information. We did obtain a CDP exemption from our Community Development Department. We will be working with an archaeologist and a tribal monitor for ground disturbance activities as it relates to our sewer and some of the stormwater infrastructure improvements. And then we have closely coordinated with CalAM from the beginning phases of engineering for this project to allow them to perform water main replacements prior to our pavement rehabilitation. And this is really important, and we're happy that we were able to coordinate with them, because when they make their underground infrastructure improvements, that helps us preserve the roadway for a much longer term, because we're not having utility agencies cut into it. So you'll see that they're out there performing work currently, they're well underway, making significant progress. I just wanted to quickly note that. And in closing, the recommendation is to authorize the agreement with MPE for our street rehabilitation project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll now go out to public comment.
Tony Chiani, you have the floor.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Number one, I support the project, because I think it's important to continue to work with the rehabilitation of our infrastructure. I noticed that the project comes up to Second Street on Oceanview Boulevard, and I would anticipate that removal of some of the manholes, storm drains, pipes, and stuff like that may require pneumatic equipment that could disturb the seal habitat at the West Beach of Hopkins. And I'm wondering, are there mitigation requirements as part of this project, such as the timing of when it would occur? And also, I assume there's some sort of a traffic control plan that will direct the traffic around some of this work? And could that be displayed or shown now that's going to work out? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Aikman, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tom Aikman, and I have no objections to this work itself, but I certainly object to the timing of it. And Tony alluded to the disturbance of the harbor seals. I'll be a lot more clear. This is going to disrupt the pupping season. First, let me thank you for moving this item up, so that we'll get to it tonight. In my view, this has become something of an emergency, because roadwork projects in this area at this time of the year are running headlong conflict into the harbor seal pupping season. This work, especially in Part B between Second and Carmel, is going right alongside an established and known harbor seal rookery. That's the one in the cove just to the west, or the east of Berwick Park, the Fifth Street Rookery, and it's well-known, harbor seals have been pupping there since 2006. The city puts up protective fencing in that area every year to keep people from disturbing the harbor seal pupping. And now this year, we are coming along with heavy equipment, jackhammering, all sorts of road noise right next door, that I, with 18 years of experience watching harbor seals of Pacific Grove, I almost guarantee you, this is going to be very disruptive. I think that's going to violate our ordinance that protects harbor seal pupping, which is municipal code section 1404080. I think it's going to violate several sections of our local coastal plan that protects ashes and particularly harbor seals and pupping. And I think that's going, I know it's going to violate the Marine Mammal Protection Act. So I think the city is going to have, if you want to continue this project right now, I think you're going to have to do a full EIR. I think CDD was wrong by saying this doesn't need a development permit. I think it does. And I think you're going to have to apply to NOAA's National Marine Fisheries Service for a take permit, because this is very likely going to disrupt the harbor seal pupping in that area. We expect the pups in that area any day now, and we've seen the scouts already. The first roadwork signs that went up said this would be over by February 28th, so we talked to the city staff and relaxed a little. The signs were changed over the weekend to say March 28th, so we got really nervous. And we're going to start, well, we're objecting to the timing right now. It's stoppable at the moment, I think. I think there's a stopping point. It's going to become unstoppable soon. So I'm going to urge the city to stop this, take a recess for a few months, and come back when you're not going to hurt the harbor seals, or go face the federal authorities and explain why you think hurting harbor seals are more important than doing this right now. This is routine maintenance. This is not emergency work. I'm out of time.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, this project shows that Public Works has learned something, that they got a CDP exemption and still are providing archaeologists and tribal monitor. This is a big step forward. However, the idea of doing this work during a harbor seal pupping season is just hard to imagine, that Public Works doesn't understand that this is a significant adverse impact on our harbor seals. And so, as Tom made it really clear, I mean, this is a maintenance project. It doesn't have to be done at this time. Please do not approve this work being done at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, I want to just say that I was there this morning, and there are seals scouting the area. We take seriously, you know, the city allowing and getting this permit for the fence, and we try not to put it up too early so that people still have access to the area, but we do monitor the seals very closely at this time. The Coastal Commission considers the pupping season as starting in February, but we don't prematurely ask for this fence. However, we are watching the beach closely. The seals are in the area, and there has, in the past, been a birth as early as February at the Fifth Street Rookery. So, you know, at this point, I don't know how much more they have on that road, because they have already started. This work has been going on, this second round of work, since Monday. And so I don't know how much more they have to do, but it really should have waited, as they have in the past, till the end of August and September. That's when they've done roadwork before. So please keep that in mind, at least for the future, and maybe it would be great to get this Wildlife Committee up and running, so they could address issues like this. They could talk to that committee before doing things like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring back.
I'm sorry.
As soon as, and Ms. Candell, as soon as you say this concludes public comment, invariably someone is going to raise their hand.
Yes, sir. Inga Lawrence Enduama, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Invariably, Mr. Mayor. Someone will raise their hand. Yes, it's nice to see all of you. One omission, but it's lovely to see you, and so far, I want to praise you for the actual hybrid meeting, too. This one seems to be going quite well. On the seals, you got to put a pause in this. The timing is just off, whether it was Public Works, the engineering, whatever, but the seals are more important than this maintenance that needs to be done, yes, but it's time to punch the pause button here. Let them have their pups this year. We've chased away monarchs before, they finally came back after much. We don't want to do this with the seals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring back to council, Mayor Pro Tempore McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hallaby, for this presentation. I appreciate the public comments. I did have a couple of questions. Did staff evaluate need for any additional crosswalks on Ocean when this went out to bid? I know that would be, obviously, after the project is completed, but is that something that was included in the bid, perhaps?
Our traffic engineer reviews all of the plans before we put them out, including the striping, and there are some improvements that will be made to the intersection adjacent to Berwick Park. So that is something that gets reviewed by our traffic engineer prior to the bid process.
So, sorry, I don't think I was clear with my question. Are we going to be adding any additional crosswalks? Particularly, I'm thinking about over by Lover's Point Park. People will park and just, there's not a crosswalk for quite some time from the bike path until, I think the next crosswalk is, I don't even know, maybe by the golf course. So is that something that we could... So is that something that we could uh, consider adding to the project?
At this point, uh, there are no additional crosswalks included in the plans. And that is uh, not something that was included in the bid packet, but it is something we could evaluate in the field. But there are improvements to the existing crosswalks um, in this.
Great, okay, perfect. Um, and typically, uh, it's my understanding that bids are, have like a ninety day uh, life to them. Is that correct in the Monterey Peninsula Engineering bid if we were to uh, delay the start?
I do not have the specific uh, bid date range, but there is a range for which the bids are valid. I believe it is ninety days. Um, the other thing to note is that there would be significant impacts to potential cost. Um, we're seeing petroleum costs increase and that is something that uh, our roads are petroleum-based. So that would impact potentially bid prices as well as our ability to meet maintenance of effort requirements. So as I noted in the presentation, we are required to spend that general fund allocation by the end of the fiscal year in order to be eligible for that Continued Measure Act and Senate Bill One funding that we get annually. And then, you know, impacts to tourism and um, yeah, there would just be significant impacts with delay.
Okay, so then I'm hearing that there is a time, there is a timeline that you had already thought about with regards to meeting the maintenance of effort and then, and so that's, so we can get the, the, is it the SB two or the measure or the X funds?
It's both. So they're both.
Okay, okay. So you've already thought about that. And of course, we're thinking about when, when the tourists, the visitors are here.
Correct, peak tourism season and whatnot.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate uh, your answer. So I do support the project. I am um, open on the time. Um, if the majority of council wants to wait, if, if that's even possible, I would be open to that. So thanks again.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm a little mystified too, why we, uh, where we're doing this work during the pupping season. You know, if you just look at the LCP uh, policy bio dash eleven says um, that we will prevent harm or harassment of harbor seals during the spring pupping season, generally February through May. We've al- we've also got um, and apparently we've got a CDP exemption. I'd like to know how that exempt, based on what was that, are we in compliance with bio eleven as part of that CDP exemption? I'd like to know that. It's also, we, apparently we started work without a contract as well. So that's kind of interesting to me as well. And then, you know, if we even look at our sound amplifier, Kate, Ms. Hannah, do you have something you want to add to the conversation? No? Okay. We also have a sound ampli- uh, amplification permit uh, that specifically prohibits loud noises during this period. So it seems to be inconsistent with a few things here. And I believe we need to reevaluate uh, how this work uh, came about and do not do it during the uh, during the pupping season. Uh, Tom Aikman spoke to that eloquently, I think. And finally, chapter fourteen dot oh four specifically lays out the protections that we uh, we have in our municipal code for the harbor seals. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Um, yeah, Ms. Hallaby, can you speak to uh, the comment that just was made about starting without a contract? And then I have other questions as well.
Councilmember Tomlinson through the mayor, the work that they are referencing is the California American Water Work. Um, so they're a private utility agency. They contracted work to be performed. Um, so that has nothing to do with the item before you tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and the maintenance of effort amount is the three hundred thousand from the general fund. Is that right?
Our maintenance of effort requirement is five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. We usually split that up between our street rehabilitation project, which is the item before you tonight, and then our crack and slurry seal project, um, which we plan to bring forward in the very near future here.
Okay, and, and I look at that as kind of like an unlocking capability, right, for the additional money? So two questions, is the, can we meet the maintenance of effort in the other project? Okay, so we need the three hundred here. Can we um, you, can we, this more maybe for Ms. Hannah, but uh, if we were to contract these folks in, say, May or, you know, right before the end of the fiscal year and um, have the contract, but not actually paid the money out, but be in contract with them, does that count?
Councilman, oh.
Yeah, Councilmember Tomlinson through the mayor, um, they, the auditors look for costs that have been incurred and they look for invoices paid in relation to that.
And our, and the drop that they just spent it, uh, with cost incurred is June thirtieth?
June thirtieth, that's correct, for work performed through June thirtieth.
Okay. And would, if we started this um, on June first, could we incur three hundred thousand in a month?
That's not likely.
Okay, um, I guess I, I, you know, I just was looking it up, that pupping season, it seems to be March through July. I don't know if anyone else wants to determine whether that's correct or not, but that's what Google told me. Um, and uh, so I don't know whether moving the project to the beginning of pupping season or the later part of pupping season is more preferable. But it seems to me that we're, we're in a bit of a conundrum and needing to, to do this project to spend the money in order to, to unlock the other funds that are, for the total one point five million. So I, again, I support the project. As far as the date and the timing, I don't know that I have an elegant solution for it. Um, but somebody who, who might know the impacts on the pups, whether it's better to do it earlier or later, I, I'd be all ears. I don't know who to direct that question to. Mr. Go, want to take a crack at it?
I would just like to counsel uh, through the mayor, all of you, I'd just like to add some additional information. I don't have the information you're requesting about the seal pups. But this is kind of a two-phased project that we're doing here, where we're paving um, areas adjacent to Lover's Point, Seventeenth Street, the Seapalm. And we're trying to get that area done before the peak tourist season. It's anticipated that we're going to start down at that location. So if we were to approve hypothetically a contract tonight, we enter into an agreement. We've got probably two weeks before we've get the agreement finalized, we get all the submittals, so on and so forth. We're looking at mid to late March. We started Lover's Point area. And then we finish that. We're looking at April, almost into May. Sure, we'll probably transition over and get some of the sewer work done. But we're probably not getting a bulk of that roadwork done on Second Street to Carmel until mid to late May. We can work with the contractor and try to work out a schedule, work with Baynet and see where we stand with the seals. I'm not saying that we won't be able to do some work there, but there's some flexibility because this is a two-phased approach project, Lover's Point and then moving to Carmel, the Second Street. We were cognate that the seals were there. We're just trying to do this around winter, even though it's hard to believe that we even have a winter. And our peak tourist season, it's tough. This is a hard area to work in. Ocean View has historically been one of the most impactful and difficult areas for Public Works to do any work throughout our city.
Okay, thank you. That, that is helpful. And like I said, it's not, there's no perfect solution, but I think that is uh, the best one I've heard so far. So I, I would support that in, in trying to sequence it where the pup, the pups are um, managed or protected the, the best that you can. So I, I thank you, Ms. Hallaby, for the, wherever you are, there you are, the presentation.
So in uh, in hindsight, it looks like uh, it would have been better for this project to have started earlier. But as you said, you were avoiding the rainy season, which we haven't had. Um, so I understand that and that the expenditures for the MOE need to be done by the end of June. So I understand there's, there's a number of constraints. But you've um, clearly heard, we've all clearly heard the concern um, about disturbance of harbor seals um, during pupping season. So I would say move that to the top of your priority. You, you seem to be mentioning that you wanted to get the Lover's Point area done first because there'd be more tourists. Well, I would, I would personally say take uh, that and move that down in the priority and move back up in the priority, the Carmel to Second Street. So all you have, and, and anything that you can do to minimize the impact, it's, it's noise, obviously. Um, so uh, that uh, there's uh, I don't know what, what activities, uh, what street work and sewer work is noisier than, than others. But anything you can do to move this, the pieces, the schedule of this project around to minimize and, and accelerate the work. Um, Carmel the second, I think is, is the way we need to go. Councilmember Emilio.
I agree with uh, been said about trying to phase it in. Uh, you mentioned, Mr. Go. Um, one of the things I do want to mention is um, uh, I have a heart for the harbor seals. However, uh, these, this pavement, uh, the PCI is thirty-three to forty, you saw the pictures. And Monterey Peninsula Engineering, uh, not that I have anything to do with Monterey Peninsula Engineering, but I've seen them on uh, my territory on David Avenue and um, where I live in that area. So um, I think if it could be phased in, I would say that uh, that'd be the most perfect scenario. And um, I'd be willing to make a motion unless someone else has uh, another comment.
I'm not sure. What, what do you mean by phased in? Uh, Mr. Go said phased, that there's two phases. One's Lover's Point, which uh, currently is scheduled first, uh, that's my understanding. And then the second is the Carmel, the Second Street in the, the two phases. I, I was suggesting you reverse that. Um, Councilmember Emilio, I wasn't sure where you were going.
Well, that's, that's what I was talking about. However, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Go, can, as what the mayor suggested, can that be done? On the phasing, uh, where he suggested it, reverse it?
Of course, it could. Uh, the Calam project is nearing completion. So that means that the city could go in there and perform any activities that we feel are necessary. So if we could get in there and perform a large majority of our underground work before the pupping season, maybe mid-March. Um, if we can execute this contract and get them rocking and rolling, maybe mid-March, we're in there. We're performing the underground work between Second and Carmel, move over to Lover's Point, um, get some underground storm drain work done over there, do the paving at Lover's Point. Let the harbor seal um, time kind of come to an end and move over and do the paving or work it out where we know we're going to be away and not show an impact. Absolutely, we could do that multiple ways. It just depends on how quickly we can execute some of these documents and get the MPE out there rocking and rolling.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm getting a little confused because uh, the CDP or um, excuse me, our land use policy for the um, our local coastal program specifically says that the uh, pupping season is February through May. Our sound amplification permit for Berwick Park and Cypress Cove says it's March through May. So that's, that's what our own documents say. That's the pupping season. It's not an, unfortunately, it's not spelled out in chapter fourteen dot oh four. But it seems to me we're in the pupping season, and I think we heard that from Tom Aikman as well. So I don't think we should be doing any work east of Berwick Park until the pupping season's over. And that we should concentrate all the effort on doing the work at Lover's Point. And it sounds like you'll be finished with that work just about the time the pupping season ends, which is through May. Is that, do you agree with that, Mr. Go? Is, is that your assessment of the work at Lover's Point and how long it would take?
I think we would, Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, I think that we would have Lover's Point completed well before May, though we could work with the contractor and um, do some work maybe to the west of Berwick Park if necessary and through those areas. Um, we wanted the whole project done by Memorial Day, at the height of our tourist season. That was kind of our goal. Um, but if it needs to extend into June, I don't see that being an issue.
Yeah, we're balancing competing interests here, obviously. The uh, so regarding, Councilmember Thompson raised this point regarding qualifying for Measure X funds, et cetera. If you were to solely concentrate on Lover's Point and perhaps west of uh, Berwick, would you be able to finish enough work to get our maintenance of effort uh, amount uh, accomplished? Would we jeopard- put that in any jeopardy?
I think we would have the project still completed by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So the entire project. I think there's going to have to be some leeway. I'm not going to say leeway, there's going to have to be some working the schedules with the contractor, the city and the Baynet volunteers and what they're seeing with the harbor seal activities, something that we could really work with them and define as we're moving forward with the project. If they're not seeing any seal activity at the Fifth Street and Second Street Rockery and we're far enough away from Hopkins, we should be able to commence that work at that time if there's no breeding occurring there. And that's something that we could work with them. Say it's mid-May and there's no seals breeding or giving birth at those locations or have pupped, we should be able to commence that work.
Okay, so we do the work at Lo- West, uh, at Lover's Point. You start commencing work at some point west of Berwick in consultation with Baynet and other people. And then after the pupping season, you do the work east of Berwick. Is that what you're proposing?
I'm proposing that we would work with the Baynet volunteers to make sure that we're not disturbing any harbor seal breeding. It's tough to say when the exact, as you pointed out, when the exact breeding season begins and commences it. Uh, I've re- you've received emails, I've received emails that it can go all the way to August.
Well, we, in our policy though, we do have a timeframe. So I understand we do, it's, I think it's a given that we want to work with Baynet.
Of course.
Uh, all along the process. I'm just trying to outline a seek, the sequence of events. And I think the only point I, I guess I need to make is, is that I think we should start at Lover's Point first, not Fifth Street. So I'm done.
Uh, let me suggest that we are not in a position to uh, re-engineer, rejigger the, this project. But we've, we've certainly raised a number of, of uh, possibilities where it can address the pupping season, the, that concern. And I'm, I, I don't think we, we can bake in a solution here.
No, I'm, but we also heard from the public, the possibility of liability of a take. Hmm, that's, that's, that's what I heard.
Councilmember Pedori.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to ask um, Mr. Go. It seems like this is a relatively a, a common occurrence, right? Like I've, I've heard that for the ADC project too. Um, is there a way that uh, MPE can figure out um, any noise dampeners or anything of that sort that can be added on to this project? Which may help facilitate uh, like whatever we're doing here. Uh, that's just a suggestion, uh, if you can find that out. And the second thing I wanted to clarify is um, there, there was a, a mention that this is, this violates uh, some LCP programs. It violates the Marine Mammal Protection Act. Uh, can, can someone comment on, on those notes, whether the, this is really violating any rules?
Councilmember Pedori through the mayor, I could take a stab at your first questions and then Ms. Hallaby could chime in if she has any additional information. Um, this is falling under a maintenance program with the LCP, so it's an exempt um, project. I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with the Marine Mammal Act and any violations that we would be occurring with this project, that would be occurring with that act with this project. I, I just, I, I'm not familiar with it, so I can't really respond to your question. I don't see how maintenance of a roadway and sewer systems would be violating a Marine Mammal Act. There's nothing in our policy or our codes that are specifying that we're not allowed to perform this work.
Yes. So barring any violations, I think, um, we have a plan of action here, which is essentially working to make sure that we are minimizing the effect of the seal pupping season. Uh, and I would suggest, um, probably guidance from MPE on, on what their policies and practices are with respect to coastal areas. I mean, their, their peninsula engineering, they should be able to do something there, uh, to, to find that out. Um, but otherwise I'm, I'm, I'm in support of like, uh, the project in general with the, with the feedback that we are provided.
I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
Second?
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Uh, Luke, uh, Councilmember Coletti dissenting, uh, six approve. All right. Uh, moving on to the next item, which is the former not, uh, let's see. Nine D contract amendment with Alvarez Technology Group for IT services. Mr. Kasimi. Is, you're virtual now. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, uh, staff and member of the public. We are requesting that council to approve, um, additional thirty-four thousand five hundred for the services, support services, um, onsite support services from Alvarez through, um, either up until the mid, uh, of April or until the end of April.
Okay. Is, are you finished? I wasn't sure.
So yeah, I can, I can give a little bit of a background. Um, we started, uh, uh, we asked Alvarez to help us with our onsite support services, uh, once we had some staffing shortages back, back in November of, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, last year. And, um, Al, uh, there is one technician supporting us, uh, with, um, hands-on onsite services, uh, for twenty hours of, a week at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour rate. And that has, um, we did not anticipate this when we, uh, did the contract, um, of seven thousand. That contract only included, um, retaining the af, active after-hour support agreement. Any additional onsite services was not part of that contract. And therefore we, um, amended, we had to amend the contract, uh, to thirty-nine thousand in December. And that was amended under the city manager's spending authority. We have tried to recruit, um, staff, um, for our, uh, to fill up our vacancies in the IT department. Uh, however, we were not able to, um, because of the current job market and, uh, challenges associated with it. And therefore we are still continuing to get help from Alvarez, um, uh, with their onsite support services. And I would be happy to answer any questions or if, um, clarification is needed in specific areas.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me see here. I do not see any hands raised. Um, however, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that these microphones are very strong, but, um, so we don't have to be close up to them because then it gets a little bit garbled. But we should be at least close enough that we can hear. And I'm getting, um, a comment that, uh, um, I believe Councilmember Pedori, if you can just come a little bit closer to your mic, that would help out. So, um, no public comment, uh, for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. So, um, I am wondering the process going forward and thank you for, um, uh, um, Mr. Kasimi, thank you for the email information. So the contract amendment hasn't been written yet. That's to be done, yet to be done. Is that correct?
That is great, Mr. Mayor.
And so, um, what I would suggest is to, uh, uh, unless there's some objections by council, um, to, uh, go ahead and write the contract amendment and, uh, put it back, uh, before us on, uh, March sixteenth.
Mayor, if I may, we would maybe need to discontinue the service if we aren't going to honor the contract. Um, because technically we should not be expending more than what our contract allows.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, come back to that comment. Uh, Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, actually I'm glad you pulled this item because I was going to pull it. Uh, I actually had a couple of questions. Um, maybe, uh, if, uh, Tori or, um, Mohammed, whoever wants to answer this question is, it appears that we're having trouble, uh, obviously, uh, recruiting people. And I noticed that there was a three-quarters interim management analysis, uh, because of a leave of absence, which I'm familiar with. And there's also a halftime information technology, uh, support specialists to fill a vacant position. So would it be, I'm just curious, would it be wise to try to make them full-time to attract more, uh, applicants? And, uh, technology is a very important position for the city. And I was just curious. So that's what I'm bringing up.
Councilmember Emilio through the mayor, that is one of the considerations that we have mentioned is potentially coming back and asking for a three-quarter time position at the mid-year budget. If we are still not able to find any solutions, uh, there are several IT projects pending. And one of the, the applicants who was qualified specifically indicated that they were looking for something for more than half-time. And it, it's just been a very challenging position to recruit for.
Okay. That's, that's my point on that.
Councilmember Pedori.
Yeah, to Mayor's comment, I, I would like to know what the amended contract will look like. I mean, all that I'm seeing here is just, uh, the, the change in amount. Is there anything else that will change in the contract?
The contract would just include to increase the amount stated on, um, the listing, uh, as in the staff report. And we would maintain the contract through the end of the fiscal year. There is some minor amounts included within that estimate to assist with the transitionary period as well.
So, um, I, I'm not so sure what the amended contract was going to bring to the table. Uh, can I, perhaps you can explain, Mayor?
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering, okay, if the amended contract hasn't been written and it appears you're saying all you had to do is cross off a number and put in a new number. I think that's what Councilmember Pedori was saying. So I'm just wondering, why don't we see the amended contract tonight? I, if that was so simple, is that, I think that's what you were saying.
I think in the past, um, through the, um, mayor, we have not always brought forward the full contract. Um, this is just an amendment. So that is something that we can do. But we have to review with Alvarez Technologies if they are going to be willing to support us or we are in violation in essence, if we continue using them through the next couple of weeks.
Well, I'm, I'm even more confused now. So have, have we, um, come up against the city manager expenditure limit?
We have come up against the city manager's expenditure limit.
When?
Um, we did, uh, probably about a week and a half ago, I would say. And what we found is there was one additional invoice pending. I believe Mr. Kasimi can provide additional comments, but our intent was to bring it back when we were having, uh, two thousand dollars below the contract piece. Mr. Kasimi has been, um, in his department alone and he has been monitoring it. But we did find another outstanding invoice and there were some discussions prior to this meeting whether or not we would even ask Alvarez to stay this week.
Okay. I'm, I'm still confused as why, why there isn't a contract with this. I know you said that in the past, um, that hasn't been the case. Um, but I know I personally have brought this up before a council that we should be approving a contract. Now, as we all know in life, many people, when given a contract and asked to sign, they may not read everything or understand everything, but at least they have the opportunity to do so. And I think that's a very good practice for government and I've brought this up before. So I, um, but okay, laying that aside, um, you need this, it sounds like you need the contract right away, but it's not written yet.
Uh, or if there's some way to, for council to provide some administrative approval for us to continue on, um, with using Alvarez, um, I, I, I imagine that would be okay without the contract if you're, uh, uh, okay with doing it for a couple of weeks.
I'm, I'm just confused. You're, you're saying that you need the approved contract right away, but you haven't written it.
No, we were waiting till after the council meeting to, um, send the con, to create the contract.
Well, um, you know, I suggest we just need four members of council. We can, um, have a, um, a very brief, uh, special, um, called special council meeting and, um, take a look at the contract and, uh, consider approving it. And, but you need to write the contract. Um, I would hope, it sounds like that needs to be a priority. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, may I propose a, a potential different solution, which would be tonight for us to authorize the city manager's spending authority to increase for the additional two weeks amount to, for the contract. And then in two weeks, we have the contract to approve. Um, that is one option potentially. If you, and I'd like to hear if you don't like it, that's fine. Uh, the one would be to, um, authorize yourself to approve the contract when it's written, uh, by the end of this week, you know, giving, give you the ability for that.
Councilmember.
Ultimately, I'd like to, uh, use, continue to use this, this vendor. So that, that I don't have an issue with. Um, I don't have an issue with the price either, but it seems like we're kind of an administrative do loop. So I'm open to creative solutions.
I would support, uh, if we can, I don't know if we can legally, uh, authorizing a sub, subset of the council to rule on this, um, outside the presence of, of the rest of the members and, uh, and also without another special meeting to schedule and all the attendant details that go along with that. That would be my suggestion. I'd volunteer to assist with that process.
I, I don't, this, the suggestion, um, to, uh, increase the city manager's spending authority. I believe it requires an ordinance, Mr. Laredo.
Uh, and it's not on the agenda for, to, uh, uh, approve the city manager's expenditure authority. What is on the, uh, agenda is to approve the amendment to the contract. And I believe that you could appoint, you could either delegate that authority to an individual or you could appoint a subcommittee to exercise that delegated authority.
I would be happy to volunteer.
Okay, we have, yeah, at least one volunteer. Councilmember Coletti.
Well, I, I truly appreciate the point the mayor's trying to make. And if we're going to authorize funds, we need to see what they, the, the entire contract before we can do that. And I, I think that message I hope is coming through loud and clear. Um, uh, we do perhaps need to stopgap here. Uh, I would be willing to appoint the mayor or ask the mayor to consider, more accurately perhaps, uh, uh, receiving the, uh, the amended contract, uh, from staff and then approving it on our behalf.
Um, I would love to hear, uh, any volunteers that would like to look over the contract. Uh, we have one volunteer already.
Uh, I would suggest, I believe the mayor pro tempore has signing authority in the absence of the mayor. So if the contract would need to be signed, she could sign it and I could serve with her on the subcommittee. If that is, I don't, if you don't want to sign it.
No, it's not, it, no, that's not the point. I was just, um, looking for, um, more, any more eyeballs to be put on this, uh, contract.
I'll volunteer to put eyeballs on it with Councilmember McAdams.
All right. So, uh, Councilmember Emilio.
No, I'm not, I'm not volunteering, but I do have a comment. Um, you know, I, I usually come through the back door, right? Uh, to pick up my packet and, um, do some other things when I always go to the city hall. And, uh, Mohammed is the lone wolf there. I've never seen anybody else and he's, his desk is piled with stuff. I just want the subcommittee to know that, that, um, he needs support. That's, that's the bottom line.
Councilmember Coletti. Well, and I, I agree with that. And I see the same thing when I come in, but, but this is about process and I think we're, that's what we're trying to nail down here. It's awkward to work through this particular instance because obviously we want to keep, uh, the support flowing for, uh, Mohammed and his staff, but we can't approve a contract we haven't seen. So I support the mayor and however they, you want to work it out. I, if you need a fourth volunteer, I'll, I'll be happy to, but.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Um, go ahead.
But you know, I, 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 let's just get this thing done.
Okay.
And you, like you've mentioned, it seems like a trivial, uh, modification to the current contract. I don't know why it's not on our agenda report tonight, but let's see it and get it approved.
I think we, we already have, um, two volunteers that will look at it. And, uh, if they're empowered to, uh, um, to approve the contract for council, I would be most happy to sign it.
Do we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest a motion?
Please.
And it would be that the council would approve the amended contract subject to the review and approval of a subcommittee comprised of, and I understand that would be, uh, council members McAdams and Smith.
I'll second that.
Uh, I did not make that as a motion. I was just.
Okay, you can't do that. No, you can't do that. But in this way, who wants to make?
That motion, exactly.
All right.
Except it's Mayor Pro Tempore got him.
Um, and I'll, I'll second, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson's, uh, uh, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries unanimously. All right. Um, moving on to the, um, item nine A, ratification of local emergency actions. Ms. Hannah.
Um, that, the item is related to the local emergency actions. The city manager during the local emergency for COVID-19 is authorized to directly mitigate effects in relation to property, to protect life or property. Um, this report comprises, um, an emergency directives taken under the continuing local emergency pro, proclamation by resolution twenty dash zero zero seven. There are no action items to report, but this also provides the opportunity for discussion of circumstances needing an emergency response. And with that, I conclude my report.
Do we have public comment?
Yes, Your Honor. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I, I hope you can hear me because the volume comes and goes from, from your direction. Uh, municipal code section twenty-three seventy-six zero two-one regarding the Historic Resources Committee says that the committee shall meet no less frequently than once a month. HRC, like other commissions, was limited to alternate month meetings as a result of COVID emergency measures. But now HRC, as well as Architectural Review Board, are still only meeting on alternate months, presumably due to staffing issues. are still only meeting on alternate months, presumably due to staffing issues. This isn't due to, this is not due to the pandemic. The rest of the boards and commissions have returned to their normal schedules. HRC has made requests to return to their monthly schedule. There have been lengthy discussions at HRC about how slowly the historic resources inventory deletion process is moving as the committee reviews Page and Turnbull's recommendations for deletions, as if HRC needs to get moving. Yet the slow process has much to do with the alternate month scheduling. We were told many months ago that once we had a new planning director on board and everyone settled in, HRC and ARB would go to monthly meetings, which is, was expected to be last fall. When is the planning department going to be fully functioning again? When will the city start complying with the municipal code again for scheduling of HRC meetings? The city manager seems to think everything is just fine, or have I misunderstood him? We need to see HRC and ARB getting back to monthly meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, let's see, bring it back to council. This is a received report. Any comments? Discussion? Well, I'll just address Ms. Chiani's comments. I think this is a discussion item that belongs at the HRC. The committee, as all the committees, as an item of importance, the frequency of their meetings. All right. With that, we'll move on to, let's see, item 11A, vacation of excess right of way on Sloot Avenue. Ms. Hunter, welcome.
Mayor Peake.
Yeah.
Could I recommend that we take our eight o'clock break? This one's going to be long.
Okay, all right. We're going to recess, sorry, we pause recess for, let's see, let's see, 8:05, please.
Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Hunter, welcome again. Oops.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and members of the public. I am just here to introduce Rob Mullein, who is the contract planner for the ATC project, which this is relating to. This is the vacation of excess right of way on Sloot Avenue. And Rob will be presenting a PowerPoint and continuing on with the staff report. Go ahead, Rob.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. I'm attempting to share my screen right now. Is that up on view?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right, so before you this evening is the Sloot Avenue right of way vacation. It is a continuance of the February 2nd public hearing on this item. And the process for vacating a public right of way is set forth in the California Streets and Highway Code. It's a two-step process with the first step being a adoption of a notice of intent to vacate the right of way. And then the second step is an adoption of a resolution vacating the right of way itself. And both of these actions require a public hearing before the city council. And we are here this evening for the second of those steps. So some of the, excuse me, the background and prior actions on the right of way vacation include, on January 12th of this year, the city council approved the American Ten Canary Hotel Project, certified the project's EIR, and adopted the resolution of intent to vacate the Sloot Avenue right of way. The adoption of intent to vacate was on a six to one vote. And the associated resolution established February 2nd as the date of the public hearing for the right of way vacation. On February 2nd, the city council did open and continue the public hearing on the Sloot Avenue right of way. There were speakers that may have wanted to address the issue on that meeting, but they were told that they could not address the item on both that evening and on the continuance, which is now today. So we will hear speakers today as part of the public hearing. Staff did request the continuance of the February 2nd item because we had some rather late communication on the proposed right of way vacation terms and some questions from the developer and from the Monterey Aquarium. However, these comments have been addressed, and the right of way vacation is ready for council action at this evening's hearing. There will also be a future, at a future city council meeting, another action before you're related to this, that is the disposition and development agreement between the city and the developer. And that would also include compensation to the city for use of the right of way. And indeed, the city commissioned an appraisal to establish the value of the right of way. So that's a separate action that's under negotiations. That we anticipate a final agreement that would go to the city council in the next couple of months. So the requested action this evening is the vacation of the Sloot Avenue right of way between Erdley and Dewey avenues. And as noted in the resolution, which is included as Attachment 1 to the agenda report, there are several preconditions to the vacation of the right of way, which include the final approval of the project's permits, the development of a satisfactory plan for utility connections of existing utilities, and the execution of the disposition and development agreement between the city and the developer. City staff acknowledged the recent appeal of the city-approved coastal development permit for the project, as well as the sequel challenge filed on the project's EIR. Should the project's coastal development permit not receive final approval by the Coast Commission, or should that sequel challenge be upheld, the vacation preconditions would not be met, and the vacation of the right of way would be null and void. So there is no need to defer action tonight because our built-in protections in the resolution that have the vacation of the right of way only effective if the project gets all of its final approvals. The, one note on general plan consistency. This was evaluated as part of the overall project. And the vacation of the right of way is consistent with the general plan. Finally, I want to just point out that there is a minor edit that's needed for the resolution on the last page. It's reflecting a date of February 16th. And for when it's signed, or when the, the date of the hearing, rather, and that should be updated to today's date, March 2nd. So who, if there is a motion to through the resolution, then I would recommend the motion maker just note the correction to the date on the last page of the, of the resolution. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions from the council.
Any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
The public knows that the city council approved planning permits for the ATC Hotel and Commercial Project on January 12th and certified the EIR, overturning all the planning commission's decisions. Much of the public also knows that several appeals to the council's decision have been filed with the Coastal Commission. It was reported on the front page of The Herald and in all other local papers, but not in the city manager's report. Rob Mullein either hasn't read the notification of appeal received by the planning director from the Coastal Commission on February 7th, or he doesn't understand it. The Coastal Commission's February 7th notification of appeal of the ATC decision states, quote, "Please be advised, the coastal development permit decision described below has been appealed to the Coastal Commission. Therefore, the decision has been stayed pending commission action on the appeal," end quote. However, Mr. Mullein's agenda report states, quote, "The ATC development project includes use of the segment of Sloot Avenue between Erdley and Dewey avenues for hotel uses and development. The ATC development has received city approval of the requisite planning permits," end quote. And to be clear, the city's decision was appealed by two coastal commissioners, as well as six members of the community. The appeal is not frivolous. There are many aspects of the project that are not consistent with the Coastal Act or Pacific Grove's LCP. The Coastal Commission is likely to require significant changes to the project. If you approve this resolution now, you will be demonstrating your lack of respect for the city's LCP process and state law. LCP Implementing Ordinance Number 239110A2 states, quote, "For CDP decisions that are appealable to the Coastal Commission, CDP shall become effective either A, after Coastal Commission's 10 working day appeal period has run with no valid appeal being filed, or B, following Coastal Commission final action on an appeal, subject to any terms and conditions of such action," end quote. The PowerPoint for this agenda item states on the last page, quote, "Vacation of right of way is conditioned on several items, including final approval of project's permits." The resolution you are asked to adopt tonight does not have a condition or precondition regarding final approval of project permits. Please read the conditions in Section 3 of the resolution. A resolution to vacate Sloot Avenue should not be considered or adopted until after the Coastal Commission's final action on the appeal. You don't even know yet whether the Coastal Commission will approve private use of Sloot Avenue. Please do not be misled by the erroneous claim that the resolution is conditioned on private approval of, excuse me, final approval of the project's permits. The resolution does not have that condition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marsha, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Lisa's very fine words. I do also have my own concerns. I would recommend that council not approve the idea of giving away Sloot, a public street, for nothing or for a token amount of money to benefit the for-profit ATC hotel development. It would be illegal to do so in this proposed transaction. Pagrovians built and maintained Sloot for decades upon decades, and we will continue to maintain it. Not to mention that there is a cost of inconvenience to Pagrovian residents that this vacated right of way change could bring. Labeling the gift of Sloot to private enterprise a vacated traffic redirection does not make it a temporary decision. The change will likely be permanent. It is a city council's fiduciary duty to make sure that the ATC developers pay dearly for the Sloot right of way change. Public streets are very valuable to developers these days because of the hassles to them posed by local and state rules and regulations. Some developers have been forced to buy streets to avoid bureaucratic hassles with their development plans. For example, a few years ago, a developer paid $25 million for a no-name street in New York City, one short block, that abutted a promote, a proposed upscale housing development. Sloot seems to be very important to the ATC hotel developers. The city is in the driver's seat, so to speak. Considering the current rate of inflation, Sloot is likely worth $50 million minimum or more, according to some professionals I've contacted in the commercial real estate industry. I am not suggesting that PG City Council sell the street, but most certainly, I think that PG City Council should require that the ATC developers and owner sign a lease that is beneficial to Pagrovians, maybe a five-year lease at $5 million per year, pay it upfront. That can be renewed at five-year intervals, adjusting for the rate of inflation. Furthermore, this vacation gift of Sloot, as it is proposed, would set a worrisome precedent. Other developers and businesses might demand similar gifts in kind from PG City Council, and they could use the gift of Sloot to the ATC hotel developers as precedent. I recommend that you do not approve this proposal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Meister, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peake and members of the Pacific Grove City Council. My name is Barbara Meister. I serve as the Public Affairs Director at the Monterey Bay Aquarium. And I want to speak tonight just to make you aware that the aquarium has a direct interest in your decision to vacate the right of way on Sloot. At the present time, we own two properties on Sloot Avenue across from the ATC. They'll be, that will be directly impacted by the proposed development and the right of way vacation. We also are concerned about some of the potential construction impacts of the two properties at 155 Sloot Avenue. We use that larger building for storage and maintenance and equipment. It includes equipment used for night events, our animal care. Our sea otter recovery team has equipment in there, and also equipment for our water systems. And the smaller building right next to it is at 128 Sloot Avenue. It's a residential building that we've used for office space for our human resources staff. And at present, we're using it for housing for college student interns who are working at the aquarium. And third, in addition to those two buildings, we rely on an underground fiber optic cable. It connects critical networking equipment from our offices at 160 Central, connects them down, or across Central, down Erdley to the main aquarium building. About 24 strands of fiber are there in the street, lies between the sidewalk and the street closest to the ATC. And so as you move forward with this deliberation about vacating the right of way and negotiating a disposition and development agreement with the ATC hotel developer of the aquarium, we're asking if the city would ensure that our existing rights and interests are not impaired. In particular, we're asking that the agreement reflect our ability to continue to have full access to entry and exit of both 128 and 155 Sloot Avenue properties. We want to be certain that this right of way vacation doesn't hinder any future development uses of these two properties. And finally, we will need assurances that our existing fiber optic cable is going to be protected from any disruption during the duration of construction and thereafter. Or we would need to determine an alternative connectivity infrastructure to be provided by the developer. We appreciate the city staff's cooperation by referencing our interests in the resolution that's before you tonight. And we expect to be, continue to be engaged on these issues as your negotiation of the disposition and development agreement progresses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janet Cohen, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, Janet Cohen. Apparently, there has been incomplete communication about the ATC sequel lawsuit to city council, even though it was actually served to 1122 to the city. Now it has been moved as discussion 3222 from city council close session agenda at 5 to close session 15B of the regular agenda. There's a problem with the logistics because then 11A will come up before a decision, before city council has information about the lawsuit. Beverly Grossman Palmer Strumwirth Wisher in her letter 21422 to city council about city council agenda item 11A, vacation of Sloot Avenue, references the sequel lawsuit as part of her argument as to why city council should not vote vacate Sloot Avenue at this time. Quote, "Because the resolution relies upon the environmental impact report that is now the subject of legal challenge, the council's action in approving any resolution to vacate Sloot would necessarily be brought into that litigation as well, subjecting any decision made on this item to further uncertainty." Seems like a very important piece of information for city council members to realize. Seems like a very important piece of information for City Council members to realize, along with more complete knowledge about the lawsuit, before they are asked to consider a resolution on vacation of Slode Avenue. Ms. Grossman Palmer earlier in her letter made a different point about not vacating Slode Avenue related to the appeal of the ATC project to Coastal Commission. Quote, "While the resolution is not immediately effective, the resolution is not conditioned upon the finality of the city entitlements. Therefore, it appears that city could complete the conditions precedent to the full effectiveness of the resolution and permanently vacate the public ownership and right-of-way on Slode Avenue, even if the project does not require or utilize this right-of-way. The Coastal Commission determines that the appeal presents a substantial issue. It undertakes a de novo review of the entire project. The scope of the project is far from certain at this time. Large projects face layers of difficult issues..." That was the end of the quote, sorry. "Large projects face layers of difficult issues and not infrequently also show in progress, which you have seen play out with the Lighthouse Avenue mixed-use condo project, and also the changes that Pacific Grove Hotel is currently seeking. Fighting unnecessary complications for any project is important, if possible." Ms. Grossman Palmer ends her letter with a simple but wise choice about seeking the vacation of Slode Avenue at this time. Quote, "Waiting until the Coastal Commission has finally acted will generally lead to greater certainty as to the scope of the project and any challenges to it."
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I would like to think that this council possesses better judgment than to continue down this path of disrespect, dismissal, and disregard of the California Coastal Commissioners' appeal of the ATC project and a sequel lawsuit filed in Monterey County Superior Court. Moving forward with your push to pass this resolution is definitely trying to put the cart before the horse. There is nothing excess in the, the public right-of-way of Slode Avenue for coastal public access and necessity of ingress and egress, only a questionable private development, that is, by no means approved as is. Failure to slow down and examine the assumptions and motivations behind your choices may lead to decisions that feel right at the moment, but fail to safeguard our interests, secure our values, and reducing the consequences for our city. We really need to wait. This, this, this council has not given final approval to the project. You are not the final approving body. Only the courts and the Coastal Commission can say that, and to do anything beforehand is truly putting the cart before the horse. The findings that are in the resolutions can't be made because there is no final approval, even though the city has, council has supposedly given it. You are not the final approving body, and I really wish you would keep that in mind rather than ignoring and plowing ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
Let's give it a second.
Peter Mountier, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening and thank you. This action simply makes good on the resolution of intent this council adopted in January concerning the Slode Avenue right-of-way. You can adopt it tonight, and it, it would still have to meet several conditions and before taking effect, so I don't think you have any, anything to lose by doing so and failing to adopt it does send the wrong kind of signal regarding the city's position on the project, since the resolution of intent has already been passed. So I would encourage you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and members of the council. The city's process to vacate Slode Avenue lacks integrity, and the administrative procedures have been questionable. There's no need to act tonight. The city's outline of the Slode Avenue two-step process regarding the vacation of Slode Avenue does not account for the city's past actions since at least the first closed session meeting of the City Council on September 2nd, 2020. That closed session was held two months before, before the city's special planning consultant, Rob Mulane, sitting before you, wrote to the applicant that the coastal development permit was finally complete. The City Council held 12 additional closed session meetings, all of which were described as a conference of real property negotiators between the city manager and the city attorney and the owners and developers of the property. My March 1st letter to you describes how the planning commissions, public hearings did not explicitly notice the Slode Avenue street vacation or take an action on it, which is a legal requirement before the council can take an action. Moreover, a comprehensive evaluation of the streets, vacations, compliance with all, and I want to emphasize, all of the elements of the general plan and local coastal program still has not been performed or submitted to the planning commission or to you. How can the Pacific Grove citizens trust if the City Council will correct the administrative procedural errors, including to insist the subject property of Slode Avenue being converted from public use to private use, undergo an objective, comprehensive analysis of the planning, planning, general plan, goals, and policies before taking an action to prove it? Please carry out your duties tonight with integrity. I don't think there's a need to rush to do the project tonight. The only policies that were addressed by Mr. Mulane and the Planning Department were Policies Number 14 and 15 to promote public Pacific Grove businesses and industries and to encourage land use policies to generate revenue. They did not address transportation, or parking, or urban design, or public facilities, or another eight policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
All right, we'll bring back the council for discussion. Let me just ask a first question, I think is on most people's minds. Why are we doing this now? Can we wait? There's these conditions and more that we've heard. Why don't we just wait a bit for some of these conditions to mature?
Thank you, Mayor. I can try to answer that, and Rob can jump in if needed as well. One of the reasons to take it under your consideration now is we don't know when the Coastal Commission will resolve their jurisdictional assertions on this project, and it's this sitting council that adopted the intent to vacate, and we'd like to move it forward under this existing city council before there are any potential changes. It is, it is not mission critical that your council adopt this tonight. It can be continued to a date uncertain if that is what is more satisfactory to your council, to wait to see what happens with Coastal Commission or the sequel lawsuit. It, it can really go either way. It is very clear that this will not become effective until all entitlements are issued. That means coastal development permit by the Coastal Commission, sequel lawsuits are finalized, et cetera. That's, that's my explanation. Mr. Mulane, if you have any additional information to add, that'd be great.
I, I don't. Thank you through the chair. Allison, I think you captured, captured their options.
Councilmember Pedori, then Councilmember Coletti.
Yeah, I had a quick question from the attorney. Knowing that there is an appeal for this, can we proceed with this item as was presented right now?
If I may, through the mayor, you may legally proceed with this. This is a conditional resolution, and the conditions cannot be fulfilled unless the CDP is issued and unless the city does convey the, the right-of-way and conveys the right-of-way pursuant to a development agreement. You cannot enter into that development agreement until you have all the permits.
Thank you. I would like to move forward with this item.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I've got a question for the city attorney as well. A justification for moving forward on this was provided by the Community Development Director that the current city council should act on this resolution. Is there any law that compels that?
No, I don't believe your action is compelled. It's an opportunity, but you can choose to pass on it as well.
Okay, so we're, we're not obliged to, to, to do this, this evening, under the current council. I do have a question for Mr. Mulane. The second to the last whereas in the proposed resolution, it mentions that "The ATC Development shall receive all necessary planning entitlements and building permits, as well as approvals for any associated relocation or rerouting of existing public and private utilities." Speaking to the point that was brought up by the MBA representative, does the developer have to move the fiber optic cable that's currently going through Slote, apparently?
Through the mayor, yes, Councilmember Coletti, they would be responsible for that.
Okay, so there essentially be no utilities, either private or public, that would be left behind in Slode Avenue, is that correct?
That's correct. The other, the sewer line would be relocated and redirected towards Dewey, and the other utilities would have to be appropriately rerouted as well.
Okay, staying within that same whereas, and this kind of goes to the point that there are no conditions, or within Section 3, there's no conditions that all the entitlements actually be obtained. You mentioned in your whereas that they need to be, but why isn't that in Section 3?
Well, Senator Coletti, that's, I believe it's implicit in the, the disposition and development agreement. As, as the city attorney stated, the, without a valid coastal development permit, there would be no valid disposition and, and development agreement that would continue on for the easement. However, if the council would prefer, that we certainly could add a, a clause within Section 3 that makes that explicit, that the American Tinkaneri Hotel Project has obtained all final planning entitlements. If, if the council's more comfortable with inserting that, and the city attorney doesn't object, that's something that we could include upfront as a new subsection A.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea. I don't want to do it through reference. I want to be explicit about it. As many people in the audience or in the public have mentioned, this is not currently a project. The EIR is being challenged in court. Two members of the California Coastal Commission have appealed our coastal development permit. In fact, the appeal, the notification of appeal required that we, we hand over all the documents within five days. We haven't, we haven't even done that. We haven't even met the obligations of the appeal at this point. So when I'm hearing that we should move forward, in fact, I think you, Mr. Mulane, said there's no need to defer. I, I think that's, I think that's backwards. I think there's no need to approve. So I don't feel comfortable approving something this, like this tonight. We don't even have a disposition and development agreement in place. In fact, this council hasn't spoken on that in closed session for months. So we don't have anything. We don't have a CDP. We don't have an EIR that's not being challenged, and we don't have a disposition and development agreement. And yet, we're moving forward on a resolution to vacate a street for a project that isn't a project. So I won't be able to support this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Smith.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Okay, I think that it can be looked at both ways. I, I certainly can see that. I'm looking out in the crowd, but there's just a few, few folks out here, a lot more people online tonight. So I think that the ancillary processes that we're talking about with the Coastal Commission, which is, you know, happens quite a bit, they, they get appeals either from parties or the, the commissioners themselves, is an ancillary process to the 6-1 approval that we have already made as a group. And then, at the same time, there's a lawsuit. Well, there's a lot, always a lot of lawsuits pending, especially on a project of this size, in a city of this size, which is not big. So, and I, and I certainly respect the positions of the litigants, and I, I, you know, I understand the, the appeal, and all of those processes will be handled at the same time concurrently. But I, I'm, you know, it can be looked at either way, whether we do it with, you know, you could look at it the way that Councilmember Coletti described it, I think is accurate. But at the end of the day, I, I, I kind of, I'm leaning towards just moving forward because those, it's not going to impact those processes. Those processes are happening the way, and it may imperil the project, period, end of story. So if that does happen, then the project goes away. The only thing that was raised that I heard tonight that, that I thought was interesting was the, the reference to the DDA. But my guess would be, and I would actually, you know, I see Elizabeth Hall on the line here, maybe she could, I don't know if she's, she's tuned in right now, but speak to the timing of, of a DDA and, and how this all fits together, you know, with the vacation and things like that in relation to this project. So I'd like to direct that question, Your Honor, to her.
Thank you, Councilmember. Happy to respond. So the way the resolution is set out, you would need to approve the DDA. We would have to get through the due diligence period. They would have to pay for the property. We close on the property, and then this would become effective. So if we never get to a DDA, if we can't come to terms, and we never, you know, finish that process, then this resolution is null and void and goes away. So there's, there are many steps to be completed. You know, the DDA is under negotiation, obviously, with the, you know, the appeal of the Coastal Commission, the sequel lawsuit, there's a lot of things happening. But we are still working and moving forward on, you know, negotiation of the DDA, but obviously, that's not done yet.
Thank you very much. So the, you know, the way, I appreciate the comment, the, the way I see it, then, you know, you just kind of have to pick your side on how you see this thing, and I'm going to go ahead and, and support approving it tonight, because I think, as stated by our council, it's just one step in a myriad of steps that are, we're taking in the project. And, and so, but that is not going to take away from the sequel lawsuit. It's not going to take away from the Coastal Commission appeal. Those are just going to continue forward as they are now. So that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Mayor Protemporee Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, a couple of questions for our city attorney. Are there any contractual deadlines for the city that need to be met that involve this action? We take it tonight?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you. And then, could you speak to the benefit to the city if, if we move forward with this this evening?
Well, we have a relationship with the developer. The developer is proceeded with plans that assume that this right-of-way will be conveyed and made available for the project. So this action is a further signal to the developer that the city is actively considering this alternative. We're not going to be bound by it until a development agreement is in fact signed, and the development agreement cannot be signed until...
signed, and the development agreement cannot be signed until permits are in hand and the SEQA process is resolved. So what this does, it would give an assurance of the, to the developer that the city is intent on going forward with this plan when it's legally able to do so. But we're not required to take this step at this time.
So, so this document has indication of support of the project?
This document would facilitate that project. But council will retain its independent discretion as to whether it wishes to in fact convey the property, and if it wishes to enter into the development agreement. Those are discretions yet to be exercised.
Okay, thank you. And I, I appreciate councilmember Smith. I appreciate your, you know, sort of like showing how it is, you know, both sides to it, and of course, the litigation and the appeal. And just a question for staff. Are we on the calendar for the coastal commission? I know there's like a March 22nd meeting, but for April or May, do we have any idea?
I have not heard any dates so far for coastal commission hearing.
Okay, okay. So, you know, for me, I'm not able to support the resolution this evening, but it doesn't, for me, it, it doesn't indicate my, my non, you know, not supporting the project at all. I just, I concur with councilmember Coletti that, you know, it, we don't have to do this now. The coastal commission appeal is going to take a long time. The SEQA litigation is going to take a long time, and it's really premature. There's no benefit. There's no critical time. There's also no consequence if we don't move forward. So I would like to, you know, delay this decision and, and wait and see what the outcomes are of the, of the many, you know, moving parts. So something I thought about is a motion, when the time is ready, to perhaps, you know, delay this, but then have either a special council meeting, or have this come back, the council meeting right after the coastal commission. So, you know, it's not going to be months of delay. It would be immediately following the outcome of the coastal commission appeal. And, and that's when I would feel comfortable moving forward with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, mayor. So I'm in support of the project. I think if, if these lawsuits, as Mr. Councilman Smith mentioned, then it comes to a screeching halt, I'm assuming. But I have a couple of more things to, to talk about, and maybe Mr. Mullane could tell me. So Monterey Bay Aquarium described that they're on Sloot Avenue. There was, they have two properties, one of equipment and one with office staff and housing. So how would they have access? That's one question. I have another question. How are they going to have access to those, that housing if this is on Sloot, obviously?
Through the, through the mayor, councilmember Emilio, they, they did review the, the resolution, and it does have, under section three, a a measure to make sure that, that the access to those properties are satisfactory and that the utility connections are satisfactory. So if you look at what's currently sub item A, it says the develop, this is one of the preconditions, the developer of the ATC Development has submitted a plan or plans for utility location and maintenance, including temporary protection or provision for utility connection to adjacent properties throughout the course of construction of existing public and private utilities, including but not limited to fiber optics owned by the Monterey Bay Aquarium Foundation, which is approved by the city in the appropriate utility. And then further on, in the section three, there is there is a, excuse me. The item C, the city has reasonable satisfaction determined the existing rights of the property owners on the south side of the access right of way. So we're talking about the Monterey Bay Aquarium properties, including the right to access, use, and develop their parcels now and in the future, consistent with state and local law, have been maintained, or an alternate arrangement has been made consistent with the terms of the disposition and development agreement. So those two subsections provide both the access and the continued use of the utilities, as well as, as, as the right to develop their parcels now and in the future, which were all issues raised by the aquarium.
Yes, the, yes, I, thank you, Mr. Mullane. I read, read all what you just explained. I reread it before. But I actually have one word that should be changed. On section three, A, developer of the ATC project has submitted a plan or plans for the utility relocation and maintenance, including, rather than using temporary, using, including the protection or provision, rather than using temporary, just take that word out, including the protection.
Councilmember, if I could clarify, we're using temporary in that setting because it's talking about just during the construction, which was a specific concern of the aquarium that they asked us to address in that provision. They wanted to make sure that we specifically called out that there was going to be temporary measures specific to include during construction, that there wasn't an issue for them with their fiber optics and things that are in the, in the street. So that's why we worded it that way. I'm certainly not adverse to a change if you want to make it, but I just want you to understand the conversation that led to, to the inclusion of the word temporary.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hall. So I just wanted to be sure to emphasize that I am for this, but I want to make sure that the Monterey Bay Aquarium, it appears it's all protected in here, but you continue to partner with them to make sure everything is, Mr. Mullane is, in my opinion, working together shoulder to shoulder.
And, councilmember, I can assure you that we are having ongoing conversations with them as it relates to the DDA also.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hall.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, mayor. And I will add to the conversation that I, you know, support the project. I, I have a quick question about if, if we were to take action on this tonight, then what, what does it, what's the next meeting that we would have? I mean, I know we don't have a date for the, I don't know who to look at. We don't have a date for the coastal commission hearing on the books. But Ms. Hall, would it trigger some more closed sessions with you on the DDA? Or would, what would be the next thing we hear about the ATC?
I can't speak to the entitlement side of it, but on the DDA side, you do have a closed session this evening to talk about price and terms, and depending on the direction you give us, then that would facilitate, you know, what our next move may be.
And those things can happen independent of what is decided with this vacate decision tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay, so as far as I can tell, if you're listening to everything, there's really no rush to do this. So I don't support doing this tonight. We can do it later. I, I don't, I can't find the benefit of it. So I'm ready to do it when the, when the time makes sense and things should happen kind of in order and when, it's like councilmember Smith says, you can be on one side or the other, but I like to err on conservatism and see what happens with coastal commission. I mean, in, in appeal processes, we could be back, remember when we approved the permit to begin with? We made concession after concession after change, change, change. Well, that's what could happen here. And so, without knowing what all those changes are and how it could affect Sloot, it seems like the, the order is, it's not a good way to, to do the, this in, in that order. So that being said, I still think the decision for the, the permit was, was the right one, and to approve SEQA was the right one. That's why I voted for it. We'll see what happens with the coastal commission's input when, when we get it. I, I think you have a question? Or, I mean, a comment, please.
I could, through the mayor.
Yeah. What's that buzzing? Okay, whew, it's gone.
We would ask that your council continue this item to be renoticed, rather than taking a vote if the, if you don't have the votes to approve it, just for your consideration.
Continue it to a date uncertain?
Uncertain, and we will renotice it.
Okay. I, I would support that motion. I don't know if we're there yet, but a, a motion to continue it to a date uncertain for all the reasons I just stated.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion? Well, I haven't spoken, so I guess it's my turn. So no suspense, I, I support the motion. But I have, I'm not comfortable with this document, that I don't understand it. So please bear with me for a few minutes, if you will. If all the conditions of, of this resolution come to pass and the street is vacated, that is a permanent action? Is it revocable? Or, or during, and, and then if this were passed with conditions, not necessarily tonight, but with certain conditions, and during that time, the conditions hadn't been met, would this be revocable? Mr. Laredo?
This is a conditional, this is drafted as a conditional resolution. So the conditions would be lifted only if every one of them had been met. If the conditions are lifted and this resolution became affected, it would no longer be revocable. It would be recorded. So it's at the moment of recordation that it would then become permanent. The right of way would be vacated. It would no longer be a public right of way.
Okay, hold on. Just may I stop you at that point, ask a question? So what happens if it's, it's no longer a right of way? And I guess it wouldn't make sense if it weren't already, we had a DDNA. It wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense for this, the right of way to be vacated, and then we have nothing in place to, to transfer it to somebody or for some purpose.
Oh, correct. In fact, it would be transferred as part of the escrow. The escrow would mean that it, that whatever the value is that the city conveyed the property for would in fact have been paid. The city would have received the value that it had bargained in the development agreement. All permits had been met, and that's when the escrow closes. That's when the resolution is recorded. This property would then be owned by the purchaser, and it would not be a public right of way. If the city wanted to, for whatever reason, reestablish it as a public right of way, the city would have to reacquire the property from the owner.
Okay, well, so, so I understand. So the vacation and completion of the DDNA would be simultaneous?
The DDNA actually occurs first.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, but shortly thereafter. So if, if this vacation, the resolution was in effect, but the conditions hadn't been met, is this resolution revocable? I assume, yes.
Under three B, the provision is, if the city and the developer do not enter into a disposition and development agreement, this resolution shall be null and void. So without a disposition agreement, this resolution then is nullified.
Yeah, I guess, and maybe my question is not well posed, but the, the conditions haven't been satisfied, so it's null and void. I guess you're, we're saying the same thing. Okay. One of my concerns, and I appreciate that Barbara Meister, I think she's still on the line here, maybe, called in. I would feel more comfortable if we had the aquarium's requests in writing and that were part of a future resolution, that they, they sign off on it. In fact, the property owner on the corner, which we haven't spoken about, I'd feel more comfortable if that property owner signed off on this as well, that they didn't have, that their, their access egress to the street was not impeded. Mr. Laredo? The property on the corner, I believe, has, you know, has a curb cut on to Dewey, and so they're not currently driving vehicles onto Sloot, but they do have that ability is, as any, any property owner, right, on a corner, both streets?
I'm not familiar enough with that specific site to, if they have an interest in the right of way, then they should be, they would be affected by this. That's correct.
Well, I just, you know, I'm not worried about lawsuits. And Ms. Meister has told me, no, we're, it's going fine, but I just want to be a good neighbor to the aquarium and to the property owner on the corner to, to have them in some way sort of sign off in writing. And that, so section A, three A, it says approved by the city. Actually, I would suggest approved by the city manager, instead of just city. City is a little bit vague. The appropriate utility and the, and the Sloot Avenue property owners, the others. And I had a question about the, well, we're talking about relooking at this after the coastal commission. Is that, that the intent? So, you know, so we'll get some, we'll get some idea of what happens. What about this SEQA lawsuit? What, how does that play, play in? And I realize councilmember Smith alluded to, but I'm, I'm for real, I'm totally foggy. Foggy on that one. How does that play into something like this, Mr. Laredo?
The city's action with respect to SEQA is presumed to be valid until it's invalidated by court. The litigants could have sought an injunction or restraining order of some type. They did not do so. So the city is able to rely on the SEQA action until or unless it's invalidated. The city should, cannot enter into a development agreement without having a, that would be an action under SEQA. And, and if in fact the court should provide direction on, to invalidate the certification or to require some amendment to it, that would have to be completed before the development agreement could be entered into. But, but while the court could have issued an order preventing this discussion, and the litigants in SEQA, the SEQA action could have sought that, that's not what we have. So you are free to do this, and of course, you're free to continue it, as it appears that you're going to be doing.
Okay, if, assuming the, the DDNA has part of it, has the city's right to retake the property, how does that work?
I can't really respond to that. Maybe Ms. Hall could. That's a little further than we actually are.
Sorry, David. Yeah. So that's, you know, one of the terms, of course, that we could consider in the DDA. That's probably an appropriate thing to discuss in closed session, as to the city's position on a provision to um, as to the city's position on a provision to retake. Um, but if you were to require that provision and the developer were to agree to it, I would anticipate that, um, you know, we would retake the property if, up until the point of construction starting, right? If they didn't comply with the terms of the DDA, then the city, we could have a provision in there potentially that said the city would retake the property, um, and, uh, a, at that point. But again, that, that would be subject to negotiation, is probably an appropriate thing for us to discuss in closed session.
Okay, but at that point, at the close of escrow, we, we just heard that the property, um, titled to, to Sloane Avenue has already been transferred, and, and, uh, the new owners have titles, so.
They have title at that point, um, but in other DDAs, right, you, you've seen, I'm sure, there can be a provision post-closing, if the developer doesn't continue to meet the schedule of performance that the city's laid out, there can be provisions in there for the city to retake the property. Uh, but those provisions are all subject to negotiation.
Thank you. Well, uh, that concludes my, my questions, comments. If there's no, no further, let's have, uh, a, a vote? Would you like a repeat of the motion?
Yes.
And a second from Mayor, uh, Pro Tempore.
I didn't have my mic on, the motion was to continue with a date uncertain.
Yes, correct, that's what I seconded, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
All right, uh, let the record show, um, four ayes, uh, five ayes.
I don't know.
Okay. The records show, uh, uh, three noes, uh, Padori, Smith, and Emilio. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to 11B, council salary and health benefits. It's like a tag team, Mayor Pro Tem, Bree McAdams, and Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, um, I don't have, uh, a PowerPoint or anything, and I wasn't sure if Ms. Candell was going to speak to the item. I'm sorry? Were you going to speak to the item?
To the council health benefits and salary?
Yes.
Um, no, I'm not prepared to speak to that item.
Okay, okay, um, so I, I'd like to thank Councilmember Tomlinson for serving on the subcommittee, uh, and the city manager for his time. Um, we did review, uh, several different scenarios, and, um, Councilmember Tomlinson is going to uh, speak to the formula, uh, that we used. And so really, um, for me, as I understand people that serve on city councils, like, we're not intended to support our households with the provided salary, um, or some people like to call it a stipend. Um, it's not unreasonable to offer a salary that, um, will cover caregiving costs, um, fairly compensates for time and expertise needed, uh, and all, also offers equitable access to health insurance. Um, when the, the reference of stipend, um, was written in 1998, uh, 24 years ago, the city leaders at the time, uh, were not taking into consideration, um, or experiencing the current high cost of living. Uh, they also were not thinking about caregiving costs, whether that's childcare or caring for a loved one at the, at your home, um, inequities, or the other barriers that we see right now. And, um, also at that time, council members would receive free golf privileges for life, uh, and there was an egotistical value to the seat. So currently, if you think about caregiving costs for council members, um, I know for me, I pay anywhere from $20 to $25 an hour. And so our meetings, um, unlike other cities that meet once a month for two-hour meetings, we actually have five to six-hour meetings, uh, twice a month, and sometimes more when we have special meetings. And that doesn't include the other committees and boards that we serve on, uh, special events, et cetera. So, um, you know, when we're thinking just about caregiving costs at about $100 to $125 a meeting, that eats up our salary right there. And so also at the time, 24 years ago, there was an internet and cellphone. I mean, obviously, we're talking over two decades ago. Um, so all council members, um, are not going to participate in either the salary increase or the healthcare benefits, uh, similar to like we see right now. But I think it's important that we have both available. Uh, and so I support this action, and, um, I'm actually proud uh, to further pave the way to encourage diversity in, uh, future city councils. And right now, you know, we're really the only council that has renters. Um, all the other councils in the peninsula are, everyone is a homeowner. And we also have young children, and I think that's important when we talk about representation of our city. So, and Councilmember Tomlinson, if you want to speak to the formula?
Um, yeah, I, I will speak to it, I think during my comments, I just had a, um, I don't really have anything add to, add to the agenda report, other than to say, uh, thank you for working on this, bringing it forward, we talked about it many months ago. Um, and then the city manager and Mayor Pro Tem McAdams and I had a couple of meetings, uh, as a subcommittee, and we've come back with what, uh, is just a proposed resolution to try to negotiate tonight, rather than, you know, a whole menu of options, um, that we were sort of at before. So, um, I look forward to hearing the discussion, and the, and I will give my take on the math when I, um, go through the numbers, um, but it, it was pretty simple, I think, before, that we had 100% uh, raise that we were proposing, and we tried to keep it below 50% is, um, is what, what we've, uh, put forward, just for this stipend increase. Now, for healthcare, that, that's a whole different introduction of, of item, so. Um, and I know that, I thi, I think Mr. Harvey, uh, was going to speak a little bit more on this item, and he's not here tonight, so, uh, clearly that caught us a little flat-footed, so thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem McAdams on, uh, pulling that together just now. So, anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Oh, please, come forward, oh, fantastic. Make sure, sure the microphone, the red light should go off. Oh.
It's on.
Okay, our city clerk did the magic.
Thank you, council members, the mayor and staff, I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you in the public about this matter of concern. Uh, I believe the increasing the amount of money the city council receives for voluntary part-time position is a poor idea. I really appreciate the fact that you all raised your hand to volunteer here in this process. Giving the city council members health benefits is a really bad idea also. It appears that there are council members trying to parlay a position of community service that we all appreciate into unnecessary city expenses that we cannot afford. The city council should spend their time on making the city more efficient, not more expensive. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Do we have any others in our public, in our, in person? Thank you. So we do have some hands raised, Mr. Mayor, uh, Marcia, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree with the previous, uh, speaker, uh, that this is a poor idea, in my point of view. Uh, it's not financially feasible for PG, and it undercuts PG's long tradition of serving on city council, being viewed as an honor to give back to PG's community, a civic duty, as it were, in the same spirit of volunteerism, which PG residents and city council have encouraged and admired. Uh, with increased salaries and, in my view, unnecessary health insurance perks, Obamacare makes the cost of health insurance almost negligible for low-income individuals. Uh, we may attract city council candidates who are motivated by the financial benefits and not by the spirit of civic duty or giving back. Also, it troubles me that making city council, city councillors' employees takes away their independence in terms of city employee contracts at negotiation time. This is a clear conflict of interest, because city council would benefit from those contract decisions. And perhaps that's the reason why so many cities in California are now in the red in terms of CalPERS, uh, pensions underfunding. PG already has a deficit of approximately 75 million or more in CalPERS underfunding. Adding to the CalPERS debt doesn't really make financial sense to me. And comparing cities that are larger, more economically diverse than PG, we are primarily a residential community, and what those larger cities pay their city council, to my mind, is a false comparison, both in terms of finances and also in terms of PG's uniqueness. PG is truly America's last hometown, and that's not just a meaningless slogan. Thank you very much, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Andrew Kay, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, um, my name is Andy Cubica. Uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for being here this evening, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I've written to you several times, and I've spoken to several of you before on this subject. Uh, I agree with the previous, um, speakers. Uh, Marcia is going to speak much more eloquently than I am. What I've written here is that the council is again considering a raise in salary and benefits for themselves. I know this is not going to take into effect till, uh, November, but it is for themselves, not taking care of the residents. Uh, some of the things we have done is, uh, we were in a hole for the, uh, cost of $87,000 a month. That's due to a misrepresent, a, a error in the ballot. The voter approved sales tax in 2020, it failed to be implemented due to the incorrect ordinance number written in the ballot, so the city is losing $87,000 a month for over a year. But the city council wants to vote themselves a raise, even though we're losing that amount of money. We hired a consultant, PG City Council did, and we got a pavement report in several years ago, and it says PG has the worst streets in the city, in the county. PG considered, continues to go underfunded for our potholes. We're all, we're underfunding ourselves by almost a million dollars a year. We're supposed to be spending over 2 and a half, 2.8 million, we're spending less than 1.6 million a year on the city, or at the streets. We look at the city infrastructure, our historical treasure, Chautauqua Hall, it was supposed to be painted, it wasn't painted. You go by there now, you can see that it's peeling now, it's a bigger, going to be a higher-cost project than if we had done the job we should have done. The bronze bell in front of the firehouse, the fire station, that's been held up by two-by-fours for a year. Our sidewalks downtown need repair. Our community center needs to be repaired and updated, but the city council wants to vote themselves a raise. You walk downtown, the crosswalks need to be painted. In front of the schools, the crosswalks, uh, the safety crosswalks for the children are be, are fading, we need to paint them. Now the city council wants a raise that could cost the city $178,000, that's what's in the report. Or that's 17.8% of the new sales tax that is coming up in April. So if we're short of money, how can we afford taking 17.8% of the new sales tax and giving it to the city council versus doing the repairs we need to do in a city? Thank you for listening to me, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Ann Whelis, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Pacific Grove Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Ann Whelis, and I've lived in Pacific Grove since 1972, so I've lived through an awful lot of city councils. I agree with the desire to provide improved compensation for city council members and the mayor, who have voluntarily agreed to re, represent residents in the governance of the city. But I oppose the high range of the additional costs that have been proposed for three main reasons. First, even if not every current member chooses to participate in the offered compensation, it could happen in the future. Our budgets are uncertain enough from year to year, as it is, without adding the possibility that every eligible member would choose the highest available options for compensation. I note that we have heard tonight about the condition of many of our robes in Pacific Grove. Secondly, I'm particularly concerned about the impact of retirement contributions on the already high cost of perks. And thirdly, providing enrollment for health and welfare plans at the level allowed for department heads is excessive for part-time council members. If provided, the health and welfare benefits should correspond with what is offered other part-time employees in the city of Pacific Grove. Committing to such a high level for council members when you do not offer health benefits to part-time employees is a slap in the face to our city's part-time employees. And considering some of the other discussions this evening, maybe, um, have an effect on how hard it is to, um, to get people to come to work for us. Compensation, though, should be provided for service and the expenses of the service. The mayor currently has 12 assignments, some of which come with the role of mayor, and so the higher compensation for the mayor is appropriate. There is a flat compensation for each council member, yet the tasks of representing the city on boards and committees ranges from two to five amongst the six council members. I understand that the ability to fulfill the representative requirements may vary with the time and work flexibility that each council member has, but a more equitable way of assigning tasks makes sense when increased compensation is considered. A time study might be helpful in figuring out how to balance the roles amongst the council members. To summarize, I support some increased compensation for service on the city council as mayor. I oppose the high coverage amounts for health and welfare benefits. While all council members might not participate, it could happen in the future. I suggest looking at compensation for specific activities rather than a flat salary in order to promote equity and compensation for services provided. And thank you for what you do, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I do appreciate that you all volunteered to do this job, and, and you are compensated very little, but hopefully it covers expenses. I, I do, uh, feel that it would be reasonable to compensate, um, council members for childcare, and i, i, in some cases, there would be a need for elder care, uh, while you are a, a, attending meetings. But, uh, I, 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 I really think it's hard to have you be considering this right now when there are, uh, when we are understaffed, when there are commissions that are not getting enough staff support and, and are not able to meet on their regular schedule. As I mentioned earlier, the HR, HRC and ARB Planning Commission has asked to be able to meet twice a month. They, they want to start, uh, working, um, on, on a new general plan. Let's see, I, I calculated this morning how old this one is, it's, it, it's since 1994. So, yeah, something like 28 years, maybe. And, um, it, our city isn't functioning, uh, the way it should be right now. Uh, some of this, I gue, is left over from, from COVID, and some is just deferred, a, as in the case with working on a general plan. So I, I, I don't, I don't see this as, as something that should be compensated as a job. But as I said, I do, I do think it's reasonable, especially i, in encouraging diversity, um, on the, um, on the council. Um, on the um, on the council. Um, I think it's reasonable to compensate people for childcare, elder care. Um, and, and is, is things that uh like that, which I, I can't think what they would all be. Um, so I, I would urge you not to vote for, for the uh, this. Um, what's before you right now, but perhaps continue the discussion of what would be reasonable compensation. For some expenses to allow more peo- more people of different uh income levels. Um, and ages, whatever, to, to serve on council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. My understanding is that you are classified by the city as. Heads of departments for whatever reason. Um, certainly, that is not the case. My understanding is also that you get compensated for all the outside meetings that you are appointed to. The Monterey One Water, the this, the that, all those outside, not our volunteer council liaisons, no. But all the other meetings, they compensate you per meeting. This was never supposed to be a full-time paid job. You ran for office knowing what there was just a stipend. And I gather that all of you, you know. You certainly campaigned hard enough to get elected knowing. What the compensation was. And some people even defer the compensation because they do consider it service. Well, yes, that's what I would like to think of it as being and to thank you for serving up there. But I don't wanna pay or strap the city of paying bloated pensions. Certainly back when this stipend was put into effect. Pensions were not what they are now and what happened with that? You know, a council voted to, you know, five of fifty, whatever. I mean, it's like the pensions are out of control. And I think that this was supposed to come back just as a report. You're still comparing cities that are, have bit much bigger bu- budgets. And most of them do not have seven council members. You know, larger cities, most of them have only five. And I think maybe another discussion, good discussion would be possibly. Doing um a ballot measure to reduce the council from seven members to five. Because the split would probably and the decisions would probably be the same. Uh, but it's possibly time to bring back that old one that I think Cynthia Garfield brought up. The food for thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Please come forward. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, Mr. Mayor and the council, I want to thank you for your great contributions to the city. It is truly magnificent labor that you do. Um, I do not support a salary or health insurance increase. I think that the city infrastructure. Needs many upgrades, the city programs and the city hiring have to all be considered and taken care of first. There is no wiggle room in the budget to load on more expenses. Um, we have a sales tax initiative reappearing again. And I think just by saying that, we're saying the city needs more money. And unfortunately, we didn't get it last time and this is coming around. So if we are asking for more money in the form of a sales tax. I can't see how we could justify a loading up health insurance and salaries at this time. Um. Uh, we may have a huge amount of continuing expenses ongoing in lawsuits that we are facing. That could potentially go on for years because of the nature of them with, with it being a constitutional issue. Um. It's understood before anyone signs up for the job. That council service is a small stipend voluntary labor of love. Um, service and um. An increase in salary is not in keeping with that intent. I think the stipend is designed to cover those expenses you may incur. In childcare or elder care or driving your car or. Um. You know, eating your meal on the go or whatever. Um. I have seen boards that institute the health insurance. And if that should ever come to be, I would hope that you would draft that it is only for the term. Of the um service. Because I have seen some where they go on in perpetuity for retired. Board members or council members and it becomes exponentially eye-popping. Um. I think it's. When I wonder about the justification for doing this. Um. I cannot see that this is going to be an incentive to get candidates of a better quality. We have some of the best candidates you could possibly have. All of you are wonderful candidates.
Thank, thank you very much. Yeah. Was wondering what, we have a system, what, what happened? Did, did the?
Thank you, Mayor. It, it does not be, um, yeah, the public can see it online. And there's also a screen for, in front of the podium as well.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Showed up. Okay, we'll bring it back um to council, council member Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm against the uh. Salary increase in the medical benefits. Um. One thing for myself, um. Uh, when I was elected in twenty eighteen, uh. Sandra Knows is that she handed me a double two form and I said, uh, you actually get paid for this? Every, every uh board and uh commissions I've been on in uh my other lives was a uh. Didn't get paid. I'm on two other uh n- non-city commissions. Uh, we put in a lot of time and we're not paid for that. I, I do it for the goodness of my heart and for civic pride. Uh, one of the things is uh if someone, it's been mentioned before, if someone is trying to run for city council for the day. Uh, they're running for the wrong reasons. They have to be running for uh, serving for, serving Pacific Grove. That's what I ran for. Serving Pacific Grove and doing the best I can for any decisions for that. Plus, we declared a fiscal emergency a while ago. And uh to, to get this, uh, it's been alluded already about the ballot back on the, on the thing. What, what, what reflection does that have? Plus, I wanted to bring up that our Pacific Grove city employees took a furlough day. One day, sometimes two days, and did not get compensated for that. And what's that reflection for us? Um. I have one other thing to talk about. Um. Is that uh, this is just one of our goals, one of our goals, and there's a lot of goals for the city council. Is financial stability. This does not reflect financial stability to come up with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to do this. Uh, I'm against this.
Council member Peduri.
I'd like to thank Mayor Protem Jenny McAdams as well as uh Councilmember Tomlinson. Obviously, uh, a lot of effort goes into research as well as preparing an ordinance. Um, and and certainly this is a very interesting topic for me at least. Uh, that I'm sitting here at nine thirty PM and debating on my salary. Uh, but uh, my, my view is that uh, we have declared a fiscal emergency. And uh, having declared a fiscal emergency, which is up for ballot in April. I, I don't think we should be uh talking about salary while that fiscal emergency is in place, number one. Uh, number two is uh, we've, we've listened to a few comments today from the public. Uh, but I would actually like to know what, what the entire Pacific Grove thinks about this. Uh, so my view is that uh, while I do support the fact that I have children. Um, I, I do have healthcare costs uh that, that I do incur. I, I like the idea that healthcare costs should be, should be considered. I do like the fact that uh salary increases have not taken place for a while. So it is definitely, everything gels up, but I do want to listen uh to it from a public perspective. And I think this would be a, a really good measure to go on a ballot. We already have several things lined up for, for November. Uh, I'll be interested to see this go to the ballot and, and really take the voice of the people. To consider whether we need to amend our salaries or not. Thank you.
I uh will not be supporting this. I, and there's a lot of reasons why. They've already been spoken, so I won't go into them. Um, and maybe the main thing for me is just that uh, money is not the right reason for. Uh, running for elected office. I, I'm um, uh, very sympathetic to the question about childcare. And I don't have a specific idea in mind of how that could come about. But if we um, you know, if we have some mechanism uh to reimburse childcare, I would uh support that. Council member Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Uh, okay, so being on the subcommittee, we uh did take, you know, a, a lot of research, there's some extra thought into all of this. And I know that all of us have put a lot of thought into it. I appreciate the comments from the public and the emails that came in. Um, I, I think this is a difficult subject, clearly giving that just the stipend increase hasn't happened in nineteen years. So that's a long time, right? So I, I am very torn on whether to put it on a ballot, have council members campaign for it one way or the other. Um, part of me wants to take the responsibility to ha- make a small uh stipend increase at this time. I do not support the healthcare benefits. Um, I know uh that, that is something. I'm curious to know too, I guess, whether I would, let me, I would bifurcate it. I think the healthcare benefits under, you know, getting a vote from the public on that, I could support that. I wouldn't vote for it. Um, so there's that. For the stipends, um, nobody's expecting this to be a full, someone said, you know, it's not a full-time paid position. You knew what you were getting into. Absolutely. I didn't expect this to be a full-time paid position. When I ran, I knew the stipend. Um, if you do some simple math for, I'll do council just alone, it's four hundred and twenty dollars a month. And if you were to say that a council member does five hours a week. So that's forty and forty hours in a month, I'm sorry, twenty hours in a month. Um, we do that for sure with the two meetings. Some meetings have three months. We definitely go to um, uh, once a month to one of our. Uh, boards or commissions. Um, I'll also add that not every uh, um, outside meeting we go to has a stipend associated with it. That's not true. Some do, some do not. Um, but anyway, back, back to the, the numbers, um, it's about twenty dollars an hour for council. And as uh was stated earlier, childcare is twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, so you, you add in the cost of a cell phone or a computer and some gas and um. You know, and, and then again, that's a very low estimate on the hours. If you were to double that, it's eleven dollars an hour in our current state. And that's, that's, I don't think that's correct. Um, that's nineteen ninety-three numbers. It was maybe a good deal back in nineteen ninety-three, um, but it's just not keeping up and it's not covering the numbers. So I, the reason that we propose the increase um to six hundred and twenty-four dollars a month. That is going to put it at the thirty dollar an hour range. Again, you have to estimate on how much a council member is working. This is estimating five hours a week, which I think all of us up here can say we do more than that. So if you say ten hours a week, that's actually um fifteen dollars an hour. So I mean, it, it really depends. I don't think it's an egregious amount of an increase. And we tried to be reasonable about the number we proposed. So that's how it came up, uh, the six twenty-four for council. And then the, the, the same numbers will work out for the mayor, although he gets a, uh, he or she would have a slight increase. Uh, due to the extra responsibility of being mayor and assumed um, said some additional hours, which I think is, is fair to say. Um, so, so where do I stand on it? Is I would like tonight to pass for this stipend increase. It's a twenty-two thousand dollar hit to an annual budget if everyone takes it. Which we also know many people on this council don't take the stipend. So it's no more than twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, I think if you all, if we wanted to put the benefits to a vote, I could support that as well. Um, uh, that, that's where I, where I stand, but I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say. Thanks.
Council member Kalidi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I do not support this uh stipend healthcare benefit. Um, either one of them. You know, we, we are volunteers essentially, we're elected officials, but we also chose, you know, to, to be a volunteer. We chose to be an elected official and I don't believe in monetizing uh volunteerism. Uh, the stipend we receive now, in my opinion, is more than adequate. And I haven't heard anyone say it, but thank you taxpayers for even giving us that. Because there are many cities that don't even provide um a stipend. So we are compensated for our out-of-pocket expenses and I don't see any need uh to raise that. One of uh, there've been a few comments about the upcoming ballot measure, Measure A, to increase our sales tax by half a percent. Uh, that's good, people are probably gonna be receiving the voter guide in a few weeks. Uh, so that's, that's gonna be on their mind very soon. And I, I'm afraid that if we do this, first off, I don't think there's any support for this in the community or, or very little. Um, and I don't want to jeopardize uh Measure A because the city council decided to vote themselves a salary increase. You know, Measure A could become a referendum for that. And that's a million dollars a year in sales tax, increased sales tax revenue, and I just don't want to put that in jeopardy. So I can't support this. Um. If this wants to come back at some other point, maybe perhaps to put it on the, on the ballot. Perhaps, but I just think we should vote on, up and down on this uh tonight. And uh, that's where I'm at right now.
Council member Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just want to say, start by saying it is a difficult topic. I really appreciate the work done by Mayor Protem McAdams and Councilmember Tomlinson. Cause uh, I think it was work that needed to be done. Um, we've kind of gone, we've touched on it before in previous sessions of council on this topic. It's always a tough one. Uh, but I do real, you have to realize that all across the nation and the country. Uh, many bodies have to vote on their own compensation. And the considerations are right in front of us. Look at the inflation is at a record high. So eventually, this is gonna be, you know. What I'm sure, I haven't, I didn't, I don't, I'm not an econ doctor at an econ, but I would say that back in nineteen ninety-eight or whenever the last time they set this, this stipend. Or the, the salary or whatever you want to call it, it probably was a certain amount of a certain net present value of a dollar and now it's probably a lot, lot less. So um, I think that we do have to keep, think about the future. Um, that's kind of where I have this in my mind. It's like, it's not really gonna affect me personally very much. Um, cause I've been up here for quite a while now. But um, it, it will affect the future and the, the types of people that might decide to run for office uh in this community. I don't think it has anything to do with caliber of the people. I think it has to do with. Just opening up avenues to ver- various people that might want to run or, or might need that extra childcare. Uh, I, I have three children myself, so maybe there's someone out there. I have three children myself, so maybe there's someone out there who has three kids. And it's like, if the stipend was slightly more higher, it might be able to pay for more childcare for them. I don't know. The possibilities are endless. But let me get back to a couple of points I heard. So I think that there are, there are some misconceptions surrounding this topic and it would take all night to actually figure out what they are and try to talk about each one of them. And so I'm not going to do that. We've been here a while already. But we are actually employees and categorized as such by the city. We're not really volunteers. Volunteers are, I would say, our, our boards and commission members are volunteers. I was one of those volunteers. I sat over there for two years on the planning commission as a volunteer. And that was all, you know, we didn't get compensated. We spent a lot of time writing a local coastal program, but we didn't get compensated. And that was truly doing the hard work. But when you step into the council role, if you are honored enough, and, and we're all very honored to be up here, I know that. And I know that I appreciate it and I know that I do it for the right reasons. So it has nothing to do with that. Because the fact that I support a stipend increase or that there one, one exists has absolutely nothing to do with my dedication to the role. But, you know, just going back to this, this idea that it hasn't been changed in so long, 19 years is a very long time. It hasn't been adjusted for inflation. We're not getting a cola. I mean, you know, this is, it is not, it doesn't support my family. You know, it's just, it's just a differential of costs, but that could be important to somebody. So I think the work that they did, so I'm going to bifurcate the issues as well. I think that tonight we ought to do what Councilmember Tomlinson recommended and support this increase to the stipend as recommended. I think the work that, I wondered what, how they came up with the numbers myself. And when I, when I just heard the explanation, I thought it made a whole lot of sense. So it, it is actually less than was previously put forth. About a year ago, we had a full 100% increase that was put forth. And this is actually something that is more tempered than that. So, and I think it was done very well. So I do support that. I agree with Councilmember Coletti about Measure A. And I, I would not want to put something on the ballot that would compete with that, with the tax measure because I think it's just so vitally important to the city right now. So coming out of the pandemic, I think we need to get all we can get. And I'm, I'm hopeful that that will pass. But I don't, I don't want to see this on, on a ballot as far as, certainly not the stipend. I think that's an up and down vote. I think we probably should take an up and down vote on both items tonight. Because I don't want to see that on a ballot just for the reason of the optics of it for the city. One thing I didn't say, I did pay for care, childcare during the pandemic during meetings. It, and that is probably one of the primary reasons that I support the, the increases stipend. Because sometimes, you know, I'm a single parent. Sometimes you get in a situation where you just don't have, you need childcare. And you also, I also wanted to serve my community and be at these meetings. And so my attendance was pretty stellar at the council meetings during the time. And I had my children a lot of the time as well. So, I mean, I'd certainly empathize with that for future council members. And I think there is an equity issue relating to the benefits. I, I think there's an equity issue relating to the benefits that the benefits could provide somebody who was single and was seeking healthcare with benefits potentially. Or, you know, I have benefits through my job. I think many of us do. I'm not sure I would avail myself of the benefits, medical benefits if I, if this were to be passed. I don't think it's going to pass just because I've been accounting. But I think, you know, it could be an equity issue. And that's why I think that, you know, I could get on board with it. I just don't think that it's going to fly. But I do think that it's important that we think about these things and, and continue to kind of think about these, these issues as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Pedori.
Yeah, I'd like to make a suggestion with, since we're bifurcating things. And when I, when I mentioned a ballot, I wasn't picturing April. I was actually thinking about the general elections in November. So this would be in, in line with, with a number of measures that we're going to put on the ballot in November. Secondly, if it were to come to bifurcation, I would still opine that we should not do this before Measure A is done. To me, the city passing any kind of increases to its salary before a sales tax measure increase really doesn't resonate well. So I suggest that if you want to do that, we bring it after the sales tax measure is done. And I think that would be, put us in a better position to say whether we should support the stipend or not. In addition, I would, in addition to that, I'm also favorable as part of the bifurcation to have the healthcare costs as part of the ballot.
Mayor Protem temporary McAdams.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for, for the discussion this evening. I really appreciate that we're talking about caregiving costs. I think that it's important and that it's, you know, it's bringing awareness to, we actually have lives like out of our council role, right? Like we have kids and jobs and, and activities. I mean, we're, we're doing lots of stuff we're busy to. So I can assure you that nobody does this for the money. You do it because you love your community and, and we love the residents of Pacific Grove. So my only concern with putting anything on the ballot is in order to make changes, you typically have to go back to the ballot. And so I, I really, you know, for like a $22,000 a year increase, I'm not sure, number one, if it's worth the effort and cost of putting something on the ballot. And then right now, the way that, that our policy is, or actually it's governed by the state is we're allowed a 5% increase per year. So that's how we got to the 100% because it hasn't been done in 20 years. So once an increase does happen, we start back, the clock starts back. And a future council will not have to have this conversation and get the slack that we've been getting. So, you know, I think about that too. Like I, you know, for me to make health benefits or your salary, to make that part of your campaign, make it a campaign issue, I really have concerns about that. Because people are so one-issueed orientated. I would hate to see like really good candidates not getting support because they're like, well, sure, I would, I would take the health benefits. You know, I, I too have amazing health benefits through my employer. But I've also had health coverage where I've had to pay $1,200 a month and with a $6,000 deductible and a 40% coinsurance and on and on and on. So I've really experienced both sides of it and know how critical it is to have access to good health coverage. Now with that, currently, the council, you know, our salary, we can put it towards participating in our health insurance. And so if and when there is an increase, you know, perhaps that still, if, if the council member would like to participate in the health coverage, they would have more of a salary to put towards those benefits. So instead of it being $900 a month, which I think that's what it would be now, it would be 400 or 500. So that's still something. And I think that if a council member, a future council member needed access to good benefits, I like the idea of, it would be a reasonable amount of money to, to cover, you know, the council person and, and their dependents. So definitely, you know, 400 or 500 is much better than 12 or 1300. So I'm, I'm flexible. I mean, obviously, I'm not hearing the support for the health benefits and I'm okay with that because we still can participate and put our salary towards that participation. But I would like to see caregiving costs somehow incorporated. And so for me, you know, we don't all have kids up here. And so I don't, you know, we're talking about equity. I, I don't think that that's fair, that I would be getting, you know, if I had to pay for childcare, an extra, you know, $400 a month compared to Councilmember Coletti, who doesn't have, you know, those costs. So, you know, that's sort of why I think that it should just be across the board versus having it be a reimbursed expense. But I would be open to that too. You know, if we wanted to include childcare or caregiving in, in our reimbursed expenses. So I would be open to that. And I do like Councilmember Pedori's suggestion of coming back after the election. I think that is, is the right thing to do.
I would just like, sorry, sorry. I would just like to add that someone mentioned labor of love. It is definitely a hard labor of love. I just wanted to be clear. There's certainly, I know like Councilmember Tomlinson said 20 hours, it's, it's much beyond that. To really truly get into the root cause of any issue. I know, for example, for the ATC, it was over Christmas and, and I had to actually go through, I don't, I mean, it's still in my car, by the way, those binders. But it's, it's a lot of effort. So I certainly appreciate the subcommittee looking into this and bringing up this topic. However, I do think that we need to wait for the election, I'm sorry, the tax results to come in before we further debate on this topic. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
I would like to make a motion to continue the item till after the April election with the, not election, but April ballot measure.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Emilio.
I just, could we, I'd like to have a discussion on the motion. First of all, I failed to mention earlier, I appreciate Councilmember Tomlinson and Councilmember McAdams for putting the subcommittee together. I know how much time it takes. And Councilmember Pedori, I still have those binders next to my bed at home, which is about eight inches thick, I think. And on the ATC project, you're absolutely right. I probably spent 75 hours going through all those binders and listening to the commissions and stuff. But I do want to mention one thing, and I'm okay with, you know, the, it sounds like the motion's going to go. But I do want to mention childcare and I'm all supportive of childcare. But I just want to relate a little bit of my situation. I had four children. And that was between my wife and I's decision to have four children. And we had to put through a lot of childcare while we were both working, you know, and it was a lot. And then this was at the time, it was a, for one child, it was $125 a week. And that was some, I'm not going to tell you how long ago it was, but that, that was a lot of money to put out for childcare. And medical benefits, I just wanted to bring up that we're in a little bit different category right now, but we were paying up to a couple of years ago, $1,800 a month for us, for my wife and I, just for coverage. My kids are adults now. We're off contract. That's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'll say it again, I think this is a bad idea. It's a bad idea now. It'll be a bad idea in April. And so I personally don't want to see this coming back to council. That's my preference. And as far as the government code, the government code specifically allows this to go out for a vote of the people. If that's so what we choose, if that's what we choose, it's section 36516. But I just would like to have a vote tonight to put this to rest. There's a lot of anxiety in the public. I do believe that Measure A can become a referendum, a de facto referendum on this issue. And voters will just be sick and tired of us just talking about voting ourselves a raise. And they'll, they'll look at Measure A and they say, forget it. So I think the best thing we can do for Measure A is to, tonight is to take a solid stand and say, no, we're not going to do it. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
No.
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 I'm an aye.
All right, motion carries, four to three. Be, Emilio and Coletti oppose.
Sorry, I could have asked.
Right. Yes, and just a procedural, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? No, we have to get used to that again.
Opposed.
I just have to get used to it, it's like a chorus. And then I have to figure out who said no and who said aye. Yeah, well, these things too. All right, thank you. And so that brings us exactly to 10 o'clock. I know that we have one item that must be done tonight. That's item 15B, it's closed session. I'll turn to Ms. Hannah. Do you have any other items remaining that have to be heard tonight?
Consultant, I believe, for that one?
Yes, thank you. We do have, Elizabeth Hall has been on waiting for that item.
Well, it is after 10 o'clock. Well, I'm going to leave that to the maker of the motion. It is 10 o'clock and we, and we absolutely need to hear 15B. And we would like to make a motion. Councilmember Smith.
I move that we adjourn to closed session and hear item 15B and only 15B tonight.
I heard a second by, by Coletti. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Can we have a five, like a five-minute break?
Yep, I will just, so this ends our open session. Thank you all for participating, whether it's in person tonight or virtually.
Do you want to take public comment while we're in regular meeting prior to?
Yes, but we're gonna, we're gonna take care of the open session and then we'll do the closed session. Okay?
Thank you, Bob.
So good night, everyone that's leaving. We're now going to start closed session.